Yeah. I think, um. Immediately.
Tony, you know that one minute silence to our heroes pass, please? The souls of our heroes departed continue to rest in perfect peace while we continue to fight on and win on their behalf and on behalf of Biafra. You see, you see, you see, BDF anthem. Thank you. And I will then now over to you, please. Go ahead with your program. And meet yourself, please, man.
Thank you, everybody. You're welcome to Canada. Thank you, our Prime Minister, for coming. We welcome you, sir. We appreciate you. We know that you're staying this Canada today will be a great time. Going to be fun. Uh, we are sure that your coming today will bring a better understanding of what Biafra restoration is all about. And also bring understanding in the quest for an independent state of Biafra. So we welcome you, sir. We also welcome all our guests. We welcome our cabinet members. We welcome everybody all over the world who are here today to witness this August occasion. We appreciate you. Uh, today's program, we take a different dimension uh, in our quest to bring something new to our town hall meeting. So we have two people who we actually anchor this program today. And I'm going to be directing them and they are going to take over in a sort of run the program with me. The first person is Marzeh Charles, a Maker Mod. He is the admin for Ontario. Uh, Marzeh, can you raise your hand so that they can give you um, co-hosts to be able to perform your duty? Marzeh, Mod. The second person that we support him in today's program is going to be Marzeh Martin Ogu. Uh, can we co-host him? Marz Ogu is here. He's wearing a red cap. Marzeh, can you raise your hand with the icon of hand raised? So they can identify you and co-host you.
Does he mean Ogu or?
Ogu. Ogu, he always will. I have told him to keep on. Let me, let me rename him so that you can identify him better. He is Martin. Martin Ogu, G W U. Okay, here we go. I have renamed him. So Martin Ogu, he is co-hosting, yeah.
Okay, Martin Ogu, I've seen that.
Okay.
Yeah. There were no. Uh-huh, there were. Um, Marzeh Martin Charles Mod, are you there, please?
Yeah, very much, very much available.
Okay, thank you. You will always constantly open your camera. You can't close your camera. You are very important. Please note that. Open your camera, please, sir. So having been able to do that, um, the next item here is a welcoming of guests. And, um, no, our prayer, we have Reverend Sister. Is Reverend Sister here?
I can take, I can take off from there as the MC.
Yes, so go ahead and identify the Reverend Sister.
Who is the MC? Who is the MC? I need to.
MC is Marzeh Charles and Marzeh Martin Ogu, two of them.
Thank you, thank you.
But go ahead, go ahead.
You already have co-hosts, am I correct?
Yeah, I think so.
So, uh, let me take off our, yeah, our red list as MC, okay? So I want to use this opportunity to welcome each and every one of us here today present. I want to kindly welcome our the minister, cabinet ministers, in the person of, uh, as many as those that are present here today. Also want to welcome our European reps and North American reps and every other continental representatives that are very much here present today. I say you are all welcome in Jesus' name. Most importantly, I also want to welcome our friends and worshippers that are here present. I welcome every Canadian members of Biafra Republic Government in exile, both those in the offices and other members that are with us here today. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, with the privilege according to me as the member ourselves, MC for today's occasion, I want us to heartily welcome the Prime Minister of Biafra Republic Government in exile, currently here in this, in the person of Honorable Simon Egbay Unjoko, you are welcome. So at this point, we have to quickly go to the next item in the agenda, which has to do with the um, uh, welcoming our Canadian reps for him, for her, sorry to say, to give us a welcome address. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, please permit me to welcome of all, the Iron Lady of Canada, the woman.
We need to pray first.
Many la. Uh, our Iron Lady of Canada, the Canadian reps, in the person of Honorable Nena Akabiro. Let us, you are welcome. Kindly give us your address, welcome address in this regard. Over to you, thank you.
O- okay, um, thank you so much. I just want to say that we need to start with God's. Um, our prayer, our prayer will not be omitted. It is an item one. Uh, we have had a national item. So we need to do our opening prayer before we can, I can give my address. So is Reverend Sister here? If not, I can do it and go ahead and give my address. Is Reverend Sister here? If she's here, can she raise her hand? So that we can identify her and she can give us an opening prayer. Reverend Sister, yeah?
Reverend Sister, who was the name?
Rachel.
Mecha.
Reverend Sister Rachel, is she here?
Rachel, okay.
She knows she's going to give us an opening prayer.
Let her, there's no Rachel.
Okay, so let me do that. And then I'll go ahead and, uh, um, give the opening prayer and then do my address. Thank you. So let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you today. We give you glory. We honor you for a day like this. This is a day you have made and we are thankful and grateful to you. Father, we thank you for this great opportunity for the world to focus in Canada for the only one purpose, and that is to do those things that will be enhancing the restoration of Biafra. Father, we commit our Prime Minister, His Excellency Marzeh Simon Egbay into your hand. Father, we thank you because it is only you that can sustain this young man who have done so much, who have received so much care from the enemies. But Father, today we decree and we declare every arrow fashioned against him will never prosper in the name of Jesus Christ. Father, every arrow fashioned against our internal leader Nandikanu shall never prosper in the name of Jesus. Father, we invoke the spirit of peace. We invoke the spirit of joy. We invoke the spirit of harmony in today's occasion. Father, we pray that you come and take over. Be the chairman of this occasion. Be the silent listener to every conversation. And that at the end of the day, this gathering shall be of you and we shall all go home giving glory, honor and adoration to your only name. In Jesus' precious name, we have prayed. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. So we are going to, I'm going to give my little address. And my best goal does address by one of the Nena Akabiro Ibe, the British Continental Rep for Canada. My PM, His Excellency Marzeh Simon Egbay, Obato Bia One of Biafra, Major Wagu One of Biafra, the finisher of Biafra struggle. My Supreme Leader Marzeh Nandikanu, we honor you. We appreciate you so much. All the cabinet member present, we thank you all. All the representative from every country of the world who are working so hard to make Biafra a reality, we welcome you. From the homeland, all the admins, all the secretaries, all the chairman of local governments, we welcome you. We say you are very much welcome. Today is another great day of joy for all Biafrans in Canada who are welcoming our PM, His Excellency and his cabinet into right to Canada. We in Canada are part and parcel of this great movement of great Biafra who have vowed to ensure that Biafra is restored, no matter what. Obato Bia, your coming to this agitation was the catalyst that brought the best reaction to the mind and soul of genuine Biafra who particularly became awake and alive to the reality of Biafra freedom. Our PM, that's, that seat you sold few years ago, a fact about two years, has borne fruit that is ready to be consumed by all Biafra. Freedom is sweet. It is a sweet fruit that was watered by the greatest legend of our time, Marzeh Simon Egbay. The story of Biafra lies on Canada. We, Canada family, woke up to fully be part of this great movement, particularly in April 2023. We started off with six members. With few weeks, we hosted our PM and second hosting in March 2024. And today, September 15th, is our third hosting of our Prime Minister in Biafra, in Canadian lands. Our number has increased tremendously, close to 100 members from that six people that started it in 2023. As the, as the Continental Rep of Canada, with support of all members, we have created seven provincial platforms with four platforms fully functional with their admin supported and approved by our PM. The remaining two provinces, we fully take off very soon, a fact before the end of this year. Each of these seven provinces, we break color for our PM as a sign of our resilience in pursuit of Biafra restoration by the Canadian family. The resilience and tenacity of Biafra, Biafra family, Canadian family have brought a great awareness in Canada. And they are gradually coming out to join us to continue to support Biafra restoration. The threat against our sister by Abigail Dabre and Nigerian government. Our PM took up the challenge to support Amaka Solemba, who was accused by a terrorist government from Abigail Dabre of abusing their Yoruba ethnic group. Our PM delegated the Director of External African Ministry, who in turn gave me a standing order to ensure we support her. In spite of all the challenges we had, we were able to establish contact with her and has and has since then been able to continue to support her and make sure that she is supported both physically, emotionally and otherwise. We, the Biafra family, with standing order from our PM, will stand as witnesses in her trial coming up in October, very, very soon. She's aware and she's happy with that. Amaka is now supporting the effort of her, her PM to restore Biafra. Amaka has been added to the platform of Bridge Canada. She's happy with it. The enemies are angry, but we are moving forwards. His Excellency PM Simon Egbay, we thank you for standing firm in defense of a Biafran who was being maligned and attacked by the Nigerian government, including the House of Representatives writing a letter against her. But today, your tenacity and your resilience and your fortitude have brought down the elephants who are surrounding to devour her. We thank you, sir, today. Great Biafrans, I don't have to waste too much time. We have a lot to do. At this juncture, I will say you are all welcome to Canada and we say sit back and enjoy the fun and the joy that Biafran community in Canada will be able to offer us today. So on behalf of Canadian family, you are all welcome to this epic term meeting. And we say, sit down, relax and enjoy the best of Canada. Thank you and God bless you. I am Nena Akabiro Ibe, the Rep of Canada, lies on office. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you very much. I want to truly appreciate you, our Iron Lady of Canada, our dependable and defensive representative. Um, the next on the agenda here without wasting too much time has to do with a children's presentation before we go into breaking of colonial notes. And this children's presentation has three segments, as the case may be. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I want us to call on one of our little child that is here, present with us in the person of Chiduben Iduwe. Chiduben Iduwe is going to give us um, his own presentation. First person, uh, the first little child to give us, uh, presentation. So please, is Chiduben Iduwe very much ready? You know you are ready, please let him order, put him in order and then they might. He's on the third floor, maybe. Chiduben Iduwe, give us your presentation. Thank you.
Is Chiduben here? Jen?
Chiduben, are you here? Otherwise, we might proceed with the breaking of colonial.
Which children, uh, which parent, which parent, I said, be with Chiduben, so that we can locate the parent.
It's Jen.
Jen. Is Jen here?
Yeah, Jen is here. I've seen her.
Please, bam bam bam, co-host Jen, co-host Jen. Is that Jen Iduwe? Is that Jen Iduwe? Meet yourself. Jen, is that Jen Iduwe? Okay. Co-host her, co-host her, please.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay. Please spotlight her, please. Yeah, thank you.
It's very much around.
Yes.
Okay.
Give me my, give me, sir, greetings to Marzeh Nandikanu, listening to our evil Prime Minister, Samo, Samo, Marzeh Samo Egbay. My name is Chidubem Iduwe. I'm a 10 years old. I am a Biafra. I welcome everyone and my, my Prime Minister to Canada.
Please, who is handling this camera? Look, the camera shot her face very well. You're cutting off her mouth.
We are good.
All right, good.
Okay, so start from beginning again, my dear.
Uh, greetings to Marzeh Nandikanu, greetings to our evil Prime Minister, Marzeh Samo Egbay. My name is Chidubem Iduwe. I am 10 years old. I am a Biafra. I welcome everyone and my Prime Minister to Canada. Love this tweet from PM. Our fight for freedom is not for the rich. We are fighting for the poor so that they may have a better life and thereby reducing the rate of crime and restoring hope and stability. The rich are comfortable in Nigeria, but 90% are poor. Those 90% poor indigenous people are the people you are fighting to liberate. You came, you saw and you conquered. We love you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, let's go to the.
Thank you.
Yes, also.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Chidubem. I appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Good job.
Thank you very much. So without wasting too much time, um, we go straight to the breaking of colonial notes. And, um, by the authority that is conferred on me by our Canadian reps.
I can mean, I greeted you so that.
On behalf of the Canadians representatives, members of the executive and the general of Canada, I am presenting this colonial on their behalf. And, um, in, in the tradition of Igbo, colonialism does not speak or hear English. For that reason, we go straight to the heavenly which has to do with breaking this colonialism in Igbo. Um, this is, uh, here with me, is one of the colonists. And, um, you hear Wajin? You hear Wajin? I'm in the Canada West, Wajin. Ojya. I'm not a bad disaster. We appreciate. I got that time.
You said.
That dark. That dark. Me, we're a partner, we should, Ojya, we're. I need got that. That's it.
You said.
Imoja, we're. I need we're. Da. I got that time.
Amen.
I need got that.
He said.
I'm not got that.
He said.
Oh.
He said.
I'm a good.
He said.
I'm not.
He said.
I need got it. I can know when we.
He said.
I need got that. I can make it.
He said.
I need got that.
Uh huh.
I can. Ndodja, I got.
He said.
I'm, I'm Ryan, I'm.
He said.
I'm okay, I got that, I need got that. Okay.
He said.
I'm a big good, I get, I need got that.
He said.
We're we're, we're, we're. Ndodja, I'm, I'm, I'm.
He said.
I got that.
He said.
I'm true, I'm.
Uh huh. He said.
Well, I got that, I got that. I'm, I'm, I'm.
He said.
Nah, I'm true, I'm.
He said. He said, he said.
He said.
There was.
There was, MC.
So, we're, we're. Now, oh, Yarumamazee, Theddy Arisu, one of our veterans.
Hmm.
Yaruneno Eba, ah. Atrom, eh, I'm Jera, no Jera. I'm Jero. My. Yabo, Yaruneno, Yaruneno. Yapaneno, okay. I need that. I go. Waapaneno.
Oh, no, oh, no.
There was. So, Marzeh Theddy. I'm a Jera, I'm Ojya, Ojya. Thank you.
Marzeh Theddy Arisu, oh, no, I think he's here.
Please unmute.
Uh, can you locate him?
What's the name?
Thedy, T H E D D Y.
Thedy Arisu.
A R I, A R I S U, I think.
Okay, Thedy Arisu.
Yeah.
Please, Thedy, unmute yourself and confirm it's you. Unmute Thedy.
Oh, no, listen.
Thedy, unmute.
I did some.
Yes, I've seen the name. I just wanted to. Thedy, please unmute yourself, unmute your mic. I'm sure the Thedy is, is not sleeping.
Okay.
Thedy, please unmute your mic. You see the prompting, that saying unmute.
Hmm.
He's not there. He's not close to his system. Please go ahead with something else, please.
Marzeh, go ahead. Marzeh Charles, go ahead.
Okay, so, Biko Waho, um, certainly here. Yeah, I was your watch. We were. He had a. I give you the one way.
Yeah.
Not news. So distinguished ladies and gentlemen, once again, I want to go back in English.
It's like, it's like, Thedy have remembered to unmute now. Thedy, can you say something, please?
Okay, that's good.
It's not Thedy. Thedy, please say something. Because I need to.
Okay.
Okay. So at this point, I want to speak clearly this language in English and I use this opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, to call on the following individual reps. Our men in Canada, the Timbers and the Calibots.
Yes.
That really making things happen here in Canada as far as Biafra Republic Government in exile is concerned. Um, the first on the list, okay, um, I want to quickly while Ojya, nah, Marzeh Emmanuel, Obi Aho, Agent, $100, on behalf of Marzeh Emmanuel, uh, on red, Ojeman, nah, Ojeman, for Marzeh Emmanuel, Obi Aho. There was. Biko Kupromia.
Kupromia, Kupromia.
They were. Now, I put Ojji. Nah, Marzeh Charles. Nah, Mazze Charles, you're one of our veteran also. By the authority. I shall. With the sum of
Fifty dollars.
Fifty, a German, because.
Nah, Kuna, nah, Kuna.
Uh huh, so, no, oh, my, then, no. Um, my name was Jack. Now, where, nah, nah, I'm not. With the sum of fifty in German, because.
Thank you, thank you. Mazze Charles, more than fifty a German.
Yes, fifty a German. So. I told me, Joe, then. Nah, nah, but. Mazze Martin. Google. God, oh, Oji, Mazze.
Niba, in there, one.
In there, one.
Eh, edge for Helen, eh, Kelly, Prime Minister. Mazze Simon. I ain't see give no to Canada. When they collect, eh, minister. Now, they collect, Mazze pastor, bam bam bam. They collect, all the cabinet members, sorry, Jema. I ain't assume no to Canada. They collect, adda, your mama, no, 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 go, I don't can no, no, get that. I, oh, be there, no, chat, no, 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 man. When I see, nah. He just basically, eh, they get with Oji, so I never tell her. I the edge, me, hundred dollars, assume no, nah, Canada, they won't.
No.
Be, be called on Mazze, nothing, so.
Thank you, Mazze.
On, on a part of Ojia. With the sum of.
Martin, oh, boom, hundred.
One hundred.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Just next. I'm, I use. Mazze Stephen Okoli.
Mazze Stephen Okoli, nah.
Mazze Stephen Okoli, because they are.
I saw him coming, in.
Mazze Stephen Okoli, on a forever.
Yes, he should be here.
Yeah, but. Walla, no, J.
While he's waiting, you can call the next person. So call my dad.
Mazze had in the river. Mazze had in the ring, on ever, because, uh, yeah, God, one, nine, no, J. Because I pastor, bam bam bam, check him, Rama. Mazze Stephen Okoli, on with.
Okay, Stephen Okoli, I have to look. Stephen.
Yeah, nah, Mazze.
Uh, one, nah, there is only Stephen one, nah, there's no calling.
Okay, that means, okay.
But hold on, let me see this hand up, let's see, eh, let's take care of them, so that we'll take them out of the way immediately. Eh, Robaxin, Robaxin, can you unmute yourself? Robaxin.
There is one iPhone, raising hands.
I know, I know. Please, don't, there are so many of them, they're, they're just coming to raise up their hand. Robaxin, unmute yourself.
Uh, bam bam bam, those must be the attackers. Focus on.
I know, eh, just make sure that the group is law too.
Yeah, we have a list of people we are calling, so let everybody.
Okay, just go ahead, please.
Okay. So, um, maybe I can. Because, only on the list. In, 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 but, uh, walla, no, J, Mazze, Ugo Chuku, Okoro, Charles. Mazze, Ugo. Because Yaruneno, eh, bah, unmute yourself. Walla, no.
If your name is called, raise your hands so that you'll be unmuted and you can do your thing and go. Please.
Because.
Okoro, Charles.
Ugo Chukua, Okoro, Charles.
Keep going.
Mazze, Ugo Chuku, Okoro, Charles. Mazze, Ugo Chuku, Okoro, Charles, on ever. I know, I can, no, no, Oji, I can, nah, Oji, Oji, nah.
Uh huh.
Anyway, gotta, Ojia, to Mazze.
But Chuku is here, I think so. Ugo, Ugo, Okoro, Butch, Okoro, please unmute yourself.
Yeah.
Butch, Okoro, because, unmute yourself.
Okay. Biafran, Saname, Kelly, no. Eh, my name is Joe, Oera, and they can lay our Prime Minister eh, for visiting us today. Prime Minister, you are looking younger than yesterday. It's only God that can do it with what you're going through. I welcome you to Canada. And, eh, to tell you that you're the beacon of hope for every one of us. We are always proud of you every day, your news, the news and the broadcast you put out there is the only thing that gives us hope. And it sustains us, it gives us a lot of strength. We'll continue to pray that God gives you wisdom, knowledge to carry the burden that is on you. And to welcome you here, Mazze Charles. On a, yeah, I've got more here, I'm gonna hang, go see. Um. Uh, video, my, on here, ma'am. Why I can't do video? Edgey more. Prepare your video now, prepare your video. Okay. Repeat, yeah.
Prepare your video, okay.
Eh, Charles. Yeah, oh, oh, Jim G, yeah, oh, Jim G, they're welcome, oh. Prime Minister. My mona, eh, I got just, my, I get see meet, eh. Come here, you go, J, I can, you know, the more, Prime Minister, oh, Jim G, they're welcome, eh. Because Prime Minister, I already know that I hear, eh, but I, on time, physically, any day. Um, I got more to go, eh, by the grace of God, I get, I get, I get, I get, go see, I get. Or the love, I'm, 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 eh, no. So, Charles. Because, Ojia, Ojim, I told me, me, eh, physical, can I, eh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's love for you, Charles, make a mona, get home, come here, you go, J. Because, because, me, eh, Prime Minister. Prime Minister, I already know that I hear, eh, I get, oh, see, in the way, I got, eh, J, not that I hear. But then, one winter, okay, I got happen. And I make a leg, on behalf of myself and my family, we are proud of you. I will continue to pray for you. There is no day we kneel down to pray that we don't pray for God's wisdom, for God's guidance, for the strength and long life for you, and it will happen, because we have seen the sincerity. Agni, Lion, Alan, all of us are here, we know we are battling. We battle every day. The battle is not because we don't know where we're going. We are battling to be able to convince people who have not caught the vision to do what they're supposed to do. So, Charles, because. I got my meeting, yeah, yeah, because. And the other, any day, any time, between what, between today, even each other today, maybe I meet tonight, we can meet somewhere, I'll give it to you.
Thank you very much, Mazze. Yeah, so. Yes. There, wait.
There, oh.
There, oh.
Life and direct, eh, please, one minute, Mazze Charles, one minute, Mazze Charles.
Okay, ma'am.
Because, only of natural, I may pay camera, I want me pay, yeah, Keta. And he may pay camera, he become, he is in here, oh. May pay camera, get Keta, he may pay, eh, he is in here, because I, I happy, eh, may pay like that, because.
Open, ah, nah.
Well, also, please, um.
Because of all this, eh, the.
I know, I know.
Please, um, those are coming.
Sonny, go ahead, sonny.
Reps, reps and admins, tell your people that are coming in, they should use their real names. Someone cannot use, um, Rapko or Togo or Robertson and comes in here because we are facing attack and we have to be flushing them out. So if one of your members has been refused access, it's because of the name that they come in with. So tell them they should come in with names that seems Biafran in nature, thank you.
Very important, and for once more, just another thirty seconds. Eh, may, then, camera, no, Keta, you may pay, again, happy, eh, may pay, eh, happy, eh, open. I'll bring me pay, eh, give me, to, eh, nah, some, eh, me pay the camera again, I didn't mean like that, oh, because. Me pay, eh, Keta, many happy, eh, oh, that one. That one, me pay, eh, Keta, that one, thank you. All right, eh, Mazze Charles, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. So.
Mazze Charles, Mazze Charles, please, communicate to them also that if they don't have Zoom installed in their phone, they cannot access Zoom. Because some people say they can't enter. If you don't have Zoom installed in your phone, you cannot enter, so you must have Zoom installed in your phone, if you're using phone. It's only on computer that you can enter with any of the browser. And some, some people are complaining that their mics are muted. Please, when we are in Zoom, every mic is muted until when you are given opportunity to use the mic. So we don't keep the mic open all through. Thank you, Mazze Mike, continue, please.
Yeah. So, please, everybody should, then. Then, uh, install your Zoom app in the right order, and then if you want to enter, you enter better way. Using all the applications that can enable you to be accessible, including your camera, your mic, and so on and so forth, please. Uh, so, now, going forward, I want to thank once again Mazze, Ugo Chukuru. Uh, Ome,巴拉, we may, we. You, news, I don't know how to put in English, but I think, thank you for. I'm definitely gonna come and collect it immediately, um, we're done for the day. And then, of course, I'm gonna come with the treasurer, who is hopefully here with us. Eh, so that, um, you, you just. Thank you, Mazze. Uh, I want to quickly, uh, remind us here that our veteran, uh, Mazze Teddy Ariz, who just called me in the process uh, of breaking the colonial, Mazze, and he was saying that he had some difficulties in opening his mind. I don't know, he doesn't know the application. But nevertheless, on his behalf, that I should collect this on breaking of colonial, with the sum of one hundred, a German. Yes, um, Mazze Teddy Ariz, our veteran, eh, Bob, we're here, nah, I'm a man, I know. Nah, no, I'm not, oh, no, oh, no. Otis, where, from, they went. Uh, on your behalf, can, Wara, Goya, with the sum of hundred dollars, so, Jema. Eh, me, but, ah, no, and it is well noted. A hundred dollars. Thank you very much. Because.
Is Mazze on the spotlight, he's on the spotlight, but he cannot talk, even though his mic is open, I wa, I wonder why.
Anyway, okay, yes, he said he's having a problem in the applications and he cannot, he cannot be able to.
Hold on, eh, he has, hold his audio. He has not enabled his audio on that Zoom. Mazze, my, click on where you have the microphone, you should see an option that says enable audio. You have enabled the video, but the, the, the audio is not enabled.
Yeah, please.
On trying, keep on trying until you get it fixed, while we continue, thank you.
Right. Yeah. So. Do we continue? Vanessa, do I go ahead?
Yes, we continue, we continue.
So, thank you very much. So, that is for, um, our veteran Mazze Teddy Ariz. Also, you have hundred dollars. Um, I want to quickly go to the next person. In the person of Mazze Emmanuel, Ejinak. Mazze Manuel, Ejinak, because Yaruneno, eh, bah. Will, yeah, again, unmute yourself and then speak to the colonial and get your, thank you very much. Mazze Emmanuel, Ejinak, over to you.
Manuel, what name did he come in with?
I want us to move, you know, smoothly. The next person. Whoever is ready.
Okoro Emmanuel, and, eh, Ituma Emmanuel.
Okay. So let me quickly go straight to the next person because of, eh.
Time.
And I want to call on Mazze Ambrose, Odoze. Mazze Ambrose, Ozum, Adams is the next person to break the colonial. And here, the, the colonialism is, please, take the colonialism and break it for us, thank you. Mazze Ambrose.
Mazze Ambrose, raise your hand wherever you are. Mazze Ambrose.
Mazze Ambrose, Odoze. On a forever. Yes, I think I saw.
Is that the person?
Yes, he is.
Okay, all right, unmute yourself, Mazze Ambrose. Unmute your mic.
Mazze Ambrose, unmute your mic.
All right, go ahead. Yeah, Biafran, take a lemon, oh. In there, oh. Uh, my Prime Minister. I make a leg, you know, yeah, encourage, and the members of the cabinet. I make it. And my. You know, strength, you know, the fortitude. You stand all the pressure. So, more, Mazze Odoze. And me, gee, two hundred, Jema, nah, Oji.
Because.
Oh, Romeo, I got.
Thank you very much, Mazze Ambrose, Odoze. Oji, two hundred, a German, we're not, another torture. To cook us, eh. Eh, because. Thank you very much. Uh, yes, we are moving forward. And the next person, eh, the. Welcome, yeah, oh, my patron. Our patron, Pat, my, eh, kind of. Nah, some of us, anyway. Uh, I think it's the next person to break the colonial. Um, our baby kind, our patron. And, eh, him, our Keta, oh, Tommy, very much. Now, says, Ojia, because, Peter, thank you.
Edgey more, I don't like, I love.
Yeah, I'm hearing you, speak up.
Man, the corner, man, the neck, eh. I get by, folks.
Hmm, hmm.
They better, gonna, I don't know, that, eh, Prime Minister, eh, Prime Minister. I wanna, eh, my Prime Minister. Oh, my, oh, Prime Minister, I did, eh, I met with. I get, eh, because, eh. We give, eh, sit, I'm, eh, Oji. I will, eh, two hundred, the Jima, the Oji. He could there. I, I can understand now. He didn't, they don't have any. I can have a.
Koko Koro Niaka, Koko Koro Petron. And I go back, eh, but. Nah, come on, you have come back. Yes, um, they cannot that the treaty clear that. We are not about the Prime Minister. Over the end of the day. Uh, we saw that woman. They will. Mazze, ita. Oji. Thank you. Um, the next person, yes. Uh, because I know my job. He bought that. Mazze. Uko Chuku Ede. Mazze Uko Chuku Ede. No, correct, I have a bomb on the can. Because I know, over to you. Unmute yourself. Thank you.
Then either. Go to signify by raising your hands in the icon.
Go to mute yourself.
Okay, good.
I've, I've seen him.
The by, I can I know. Um, Mazze Simon, eh, eh, um, the, and the vice, and I who are gonna give me. Ah, who didn't, but who are gonna give me.
Mm-hmm.
The holy. So, man, in this contest, the kita was a, ah, who didn't, ah, who he own them. Swinging into action. Usu be kidnapped, Mazze, and I'm the kind of setting up a structure in place, he ain't in the, nah, go from off, from off, so what, what, what in the zoo, where hang what. They again, men, the zoo. Kidnapped, well, none, they can, or the useless, or the empty, he gonna in, he forgot. If you get, many things, okay, China, I'm gonna, I mean, setting up, uh, um, the front government in exile, the structure on the homeland. The liberation army, it would, if you get, oh, why, we can have, was in the, you know, I am a rock, or I'm a shake, it's my kind of safety then. Oh, no, man, uh, uh, no, man, uh, they are, but, and I can, they are fond. I can, yeah, the safe. He make a oh, I said, I'm going well, oh, two hundred dollars, where I was, yeah, once again, no, oh, no.
Thank you very much.
Mazie Charles, please, always leave that there, leave your camera the way it was, I just leave it like that.
Yeah, that's alright. Thank you very much, thank you very much. Because once again, let's put our hands together for Mazze. Uko Chuku, eh, eh, Koko Koro Niaka. Oh. One of our young man, Nabamba, on the Canada, thank you very much, my bless. Um, the next person on the list. He was, yeah, Kedi, we are not about our Prime Minister. Who, um, another person, in the person of Mazze Obona, Elashan. Mazze Obona, Elishan. Because you are running a bar, over to you, unmute yourself. Thank you.
So, Obona again.
Obona. Elishan, on the ever.
We have Obona on your tree. Not Obona or Elishan.
Okay.
Just raise your hands, Obona, please.
Him, I know, he won't, yeah, and he won't come, because we are, because some people, yeah. Some, they met each other, so.
And if you want to hold your camera, please go ahead and do so now. Put on your camera, if you wanna do the camera, just put on your camera, please. Why any camera no? And I was, you know, don't put it off, just leave it on. When you put it on, please. Thank you. Go ahead, MC, Obona, we can find him.
Okay, so please, as soon as you do that, just uh, you know, to find him. The next person on the list, a while I know, G, Gina, but now Prime Minister. Is Mazze Emmanuel, I'm not here. Mazze Emmanuel, I'm not here. Please, if you know you are here, unmute yourself, and over to you, thank you.
Okay, my friend, neighbor. Okay, open the next person, kinda.
Okay, so let's make the next person on the list. Is also another young man, Nabamba, Nakana, that. On a, well, Kimbo. They made the punch, sure, that's in, 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 she. As far as the front of the government. In as a this concern, right here in Canada. It's not a person that Mazze. Casimir. Open Mazze Casimir, open. Um. Or you know. You go, unmute yourself.
Casimir, yeah, unmute yourself, Casimir, okay. Because, on the behalf of, they won't know.
They will.
They will. On my behalf, I believe, I know.
They will.
On behalf of, who don't know. They wanna know. My PM. They will. They will, they will. They will welcome you to Canada again. Obi, 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 Zoo, Otri, him, man, so, I can't allow.
Mm-hmm.
Uncle them, man. The only man that the world is talking about today. I heard it like a Coca-Cola, more, more, when they become, actually, only a she made, oh, the money, I'm not a name. I have Bella again today. Not one of them, I question many. Because Biafra is our identity. One young boy is Biafra, Wahbaram, Biafra, Wahbarani, I never. Oh. What you talk about, do, come, but they. I'm a major, hundred, oh, Gemma, Gina, what I PM, oh, gee. She be copy M. Eh, that, oh, dear, eh, got that land, oh. That I weak, oh, momo, who do? Now, I took, oh, Kika, Bia, my oh.
Okay.
Ah, that didn't, but I don't get it, I'm gonna hear.
Koko Koro Niaka.
Koro Niaka.
I'm a Kupa, eh, eh, eh.
Yes. Ah, Guinea. Hey. Y, y, go. Oh, but, oh, yeah. Who do I come, really? Who call them, oh.
They will.
Two a quarter.
Oh, I'm a, he's in a, boy, Gideon. Who call them, oh.
That's what I, that's what I.
Oh, but, oh, yeah. Who do I come, really? They will. Eh, we're the rock, and I do, eh, we're not, so, can you do?
Two a quarter.
Oh, where, eh, come, oh. Eh, come, oh. Oh, no, oh. One, ah, Papa, Kewo. They will. They will.
So.
Pass Charles, right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, so moving forward, the next person on the list, he was here, eh, eh, number ten, Prime Minister. Is Mazze. Eh, Z, if I'm only, yeah, eh. Mazze, eh, if I'm only, eh, eh, eh. And eh, eh, eh. I'll name it.
Raise your hand, eh, Z, former. Mazze, eh, Z, for me, never. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, running, no, however. Oh, my, but another young man, which I left, I'll get that. You know, I was, I'm, I'm not led by the spirit, come, oh, yeah. So I'm just going out of my way from what we have on the list, is very much a present with us. Think, I think all of us, I think that, uh, on our, it's still original. So, um, it's also a very young, energetic, uh, resourceful person. Young man, um, I'm a panda, Canada. I am Mazze Doji, Mazze Doji, because, oh, dear, not believe, because, um, who wrote, who, G, G, number ten, Prime Minister, thank you.
They will. Um, I'm a doggy. Um, eh, watch. Oh, nah, I'm gonna leave. Oh, yeah, that's, I'm gonna be there, but eh. My, oh, yeah, I'm gonna be there. They can, I show you, ah. That's the reason. Eh, watch. You can, yeah, Canada. I know, you know, watch. Oh, yeah, when I come, I question, yeah, when I. Did you, I want to be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so many, I can't. You can imagine, uh, but what did you, you know, see, now, I can't, it's been very nice, you can imagine, now, the liar is.
We'll let him come. Come. Anna Batani.
Michael, unmute yourself, please. Okay.
Thank you. I think all the comments.
Network at the back.
Total.
Canada call. Canada call, 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 hold on. Unmute yourself. Okay, you might need to go out and come in again. Maybe somebody has called you, you have answered calls and then. It doesn't.
Okay, so while he is doing that, I want to quickly, I'm going to call you back through my progress. So while he is doing that, I want to use this opportunity to recognize the person. Mazie Clifford, Okocha. Mazie Clifford, you're the next on the list. A one energy. Because. While I know you.
Yeah.
And ever. Over to you. Mazie Clifford.
I've no fight before though.
Mazie Michael is Uchuku Awalaji.
We have a raise hand, Gladys.
He's here.
Is that? Okay. On how I would do it enough.
Yes, uh, yeah, he's Clifford, yeah. That's. Yeah. That is a wife.
Good evening, my PM. My husband is not around, he's at work. On behalf of him, he told me to give our PM two hundred dollar for Oji.
Thank you.
Two hundred Jema for Oji.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anna Popa.
Uh, Mazie Charles, please, I just want to recognize the COS, I think she just came in. If I'm not mistaken.
Who?
A COS, so don't, I'm just recognizing her. Don't talk to her, you are welcome, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, honorable Nena, thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, Charles, continue.
So, uh, because, uh, Anna make a lead. Uh, our brother Mazie Clifford. Okocha. On about the Roger. Now. Our family with the sum of two hundred of Jema.
Yes.
So, yes, because Cooper on your calls. Me, China, I can.
Michael is trying to open his camera again, let's give him the chance, maybe he can talk now. Uh, Michael, open your camera again and then unmute yourself.
Mike is Uchuku. Uh huh. Good job. Yeah.
Okay, so is Uchuku, over to you.
Is it good, is it good, you might need to go, you might need to either go out or you refresh your system.
In fact, there is. Is Uchuku coming in, I don't know whether it's this one or another one.
Is Uchuku, refresh your system, oh? And, um. Mazie Charles, how can this young man? Now, spotlight now.
Uh, Awalaji, you can remove them from spotlight for now.
Okay.
Now, Awalaji.
Yes.
Uh, Mazie, Mazie, Michael, you can talk, even though we, we are not seeing your face. You can talk. Okay. He can come in. So. Mazie Charles, go ahead.
It's okay, so, um, very quickly, I want to go to the next on the list. They were just. Um, offer another very young. Um. Apple body, the man. Now, I'm up at that here, name, long time ago, Canada. Now, Daniel. Extremely young guy. But also by here, name. Um. The, it's not a person other than Mazie. Williams. Mazie Williams. Um, the over to. It is one and one, thank you.
Anna Eva.
Anna, yeah, Anna, yeah, me, pay, open your, that is unmute yourself. And then one on your logo.
Okay, uh, they can, and they move yeah for a, and then one, and then one. When I did it well, they won't.
Yeah.
So. Anna make a, my PM. For finding time to visit us in Canada. Uh, my PM, you're welcome, Obi, Obi the motor. Never let down. So, Anna, uh, hundred dollars, hundred a Jema. Now, what I go, Oji. Now, I still want to bring a thought, they got that, that, I'm a me, I'm a me.
And we are going to be calling up our women. These two hundred eight minutes, but only. But I need you, I need you, oh, sorry. I need a lot of. So. Come be yesterday. And they are all back. So, our, our brother Mazin, we'll be calling them. Our PM. This morning. Martin, Mazin Martin, can you continue? With. Okay, Martin. Okay. I think I will permit Mazie Charles to continue. When Martin comes in, he will take from where you stop. We don't want to waste more time. We don't want this.
Which one is the Martin?
Martin Ogung. He was, yeah, showing his face, I'm on what happened.
Yeah, I wonder, okay, Martin Ogung, unmute yourself.
Okay, I have unmuted myself.
Uh huh. Yes.
Sorry, I didn't know I was, I was muted.
You are muted.
Another energy two hundred a German. As the Prime Minister. He's open.
Yes.
So. Adama. Call the water Prime Minister. Adam was. You will. May unmute yourself.
Oh, no. The second person.
Adama is unmuted. Go ahead, Adama.
His Excellency. PM. You're welcome. Um. I think I will be two hundred and fifty. Where's all of course. You see.
Thank you.
There were.
Thank you.
There were.
There were.
I'm. Um. Call the.
Hmm. Honey, I got out here this morning, honey.
Yeah.
They came back with something, I don't sure.
I've been in. You mu- you mu- mute yourself.
You have to ask him to raise. Raise the hand because he's not here.
Jane. Thank you.
Please unmute yourself.
Good job.
Sorry, Jane, unmute yourself again.
Okay. Yeah. Because. Fifty dollar. A gem. Prime Minister. I dad. Fifty dollar. Keep to them, Prime Minister. Okay. Eh, Canada. 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 Canada.
Ah, that. There were.
Oh, she learned. Can I not buzz? Oh, she run. Ah, give me.
There were.
Thank you.
I welcome my Prime Minister. Excellency Simon Ekba, we are so, so grateful. You don't know how much life you have saved. My mom, she is ninety-two years, she said during the war. You will see children, they'll cry and they'll cry no more. Because of hunger. Men were dying, women were dying. And today, you said no more. You have come to save every one of us. Those children that died so many years ago, those children that cry due to hunger. Their spirit is with you. Those children. Because of hunger. Because of the blockade of food, they didn't see food to eat. And today. We thank you, our Prime Minister. God bless you, sir. I'm gonna. Prime Minister. I get. Search in two hundred dollars. A German, I go to Prime Minister. You are welcome, Prime Minister.
There were.
There were. Uh, because. As a Prime Minister. Well, then they were. I'm a politician. One other sister. Call the. Tell sister. Sister, please, if you are around, unmute yourself and speak.
Please, if you are co-host here, don't bring in anybody, please. I'm seeing some strange names. When I want to take care of them, I'll just see that they have entered. Please, don't bring in anybody, please. If you are co-host, you see any prompting, do not bring in anybody, Biko. Yeah. All right, uh, please, who is the person you call? Okay, sister, I'm here. All right, unmute yourself, sister.
I have.
There was sister.
There was no. Me more mute. I know me, I know me. Four times. Day, day, no way.
You're welcome.
Uh huh, I'm a make. Now I seen. Prime Minister, no, not Canada. Oh, even though. I'm bossing in there. Oh, when I am. I am. Man, oh, sorry. I'm a way fifty dollars. Fifty a gemma. No, not Canada.
There were.
Kinda cool, sister. Sister.
Sister Onua, is that the name she got in with Onua?
Yes, sister Onua.
Sister, no, sister Onua is not there by that name. Adora, Adama is raising her hand again. Can we just hear what she's trying to say? Adama, please unmute yourself.
On behalf of. Uh, fifty dollars, please.
Uh, okay, she's speaking on behalf of Onua, so nice taking care of. Thank you.
Okay, there were. Hello. Um. Call the.
Can say.
Omar Idade.
Omar. Oh, Omar Mada, I don't know if it's this Omar Mada. Omar Mada, are you the one? Unmute yourself. Are you the one?
Yes.
All right, uh. Okay. Just open your camera if you wish. Omar, okay. I'm gonna spotlight you now.
Oh, hey, Biafra.
There were.
Greetings to, uh. Able Prime Minister, His Excellency Mazie Simon Ekba. Greetings to all the cabinet members. The Finance Minister. COS. The media team. And the Information Ministers. And every other great behalf from present. Prime Minister, I want to appreciate you for all you do. For the love you show to your people. The selflessness. We appreciate that. Words cannot express how grateful we are. And. I'm going to break the cola. With hundred a gemma. Thank you and welcome to Canada.
There were.
Thank you.
There were. One day. One day. Call the.
Esther. Okay, Esther Onyema, is that Esther O? Unmute yourself. Esther O, is that you? Unmute yourself. Is that you?
Yes.
Is that? All right, uh, you can put on your camera if you wish.
Yeah.
All right, okay, go ahead and let's.
Thank you. Prime Minister. Obi Mjiru. Nah. Prime Minister. Oh, when I ever visit. I'm a major hundred dollar. Now. Hundred a gemma. I say. Oh, quite. Oh, quite. Oh, no, why? Amen.
Please, one minute, uh, please, somebody just came in, Tenten, please, who is Tenten? Unmute yourself, Tenten. Tenten, please, you push to come in with something that is, we can relate with. Not with this alias, Tenten, please, who is Tenten? Yes, go ahead, speak up. Tenten, speak up. See that, that's a fake, fake scene. All right, please, uh, go ahead, Mazie.
Okay. Um, because. Oh, yeah, Marka. Now, oh, do you be there, Prime Minister? Oh, the Prime Minister.
Benedict.
One other Benedict, oh, Jacko.
Benedict, Biko. I can't find the Benedict. Please, go ahead, I can't find the Benedict.
Okay. Um. I'm a politician. Go with the Prime Minister.
They don't give me money. To travel back to his homeland. So, my people. This is what is going on.
Please, whose mic is on? Mute your mic, please.
Or doing what? Tomorrow, they will make.
Right. Please, Mazie, unmute yourself and call the name again. Gloria, right? Unmute yourself, Maz Martin.
Hello.
You said Gloria.
Yes.
All right, is that Gloria iPhone? Gloria iPhone, unmute yourself, let's see if, if you're the one. Gloria's iPhone. Gloria's iPhone, please unmute, please go ahead, this Gloria is not the one, probably. Call other names if you have.
All right, uh, as we wait for Gloria to come in.
Hello, yes, I'm here. Yeah, it's not going, even my camera is not going, since it's blocked.
Your camera will go now, your camera will go now, open your camera now. Have you done that?
Yeah, yeah, I done that, okay, thank you. My Prime Minister agreed to, I'm making. Twenty, I did English. So, Kita can say, I hear. When I second. Hundred a gemma. When eh, any Prime Minister. So, may go to. Go to. Go to. Where's the. Go. Put it. Hey. Now down below. Oh, but. Oh, that like this.
Yeah, yes, yes. You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Yeah.
Thank you, please, advise your people not to be coming in with names that are strange. Coming with names like Drake, Date, Vixen, all these names, but I'm gonna admit you, please. Okay. Please, uh, go ahead.
All right, uh, so. As we clap for Benedict, please, I'm calling on. One other Gloria. To come and present. For the Prime Minister.
Another Gloria.
Oh, okay. Sorry for the. One other Unis. But see, because.
Thank you.
Unis, what name did you come in with? Uh, Unis is not here, but what name did you call? She may have come in with another name. Now, raise your hand, Unis, you should be conversant with that now. You're old school, Unis, Unis is an old school, so she should know.
Yeah.
Raise your hand, Unis.
I have seen her.
While we're waiting for Unis, go ahead, Unis will come in.
Yeah.
Uh, as we wait for Unis.
Unis is here.
Okay.
She came in with Peter, Peter. Peter, Cody, but. Unis, can you unmute yourself then?
Raise her hand now, she should raise her hand, she should know how to raise her hand.
It's in the second page of the.
She's not raising her hand, uh, if her hand is raised, I'll say. unmute yourself, Peter.
She's not.
Peter, unmute yourself. Is that Unis?
Yes.
I have a look at. No.
Yes.
I know.
Yes.
I know. Your, your, your audio is, your audio is already very. Already, your audio is poor, why is it poor like that?
My audio is poor?
Yes.
My goodness. I can think it's better now.
Try raising the volume.
Okay, uh, one, one, one second.
Uh huh, you look good. He's good now, he's good. We are here. Yes.
Go ahead.
Like, is it better? I don't want to.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Please, can you permit me to play this audio with me for much? It means a lot to me.
If, if this sound would be fine, please.
Yeah, I want to remind. Was our natural mother, one of the visits to late to the US, one of the town hall, uh, meeting, the West, to the US. Those, our natural mother. Said a special prayer and made a good logic to our. And I will sit for this audio. And I sent him a message and he sent you the logic. Please permit me to play this trailer and new logic for our. They don't have much to say. Am I allowed, please?
Yeah.
Please.
On it. Okay. I hope we hear it. We are not hearing it, I think.
It is playing, we are not hearing it. It is playing, we are not hearing it. You can send it to me, I'll play it from my end.
Okay, all right, I'll do that right now. Forgive me. Um, my Prime Minister. God bless you, sir. I so much appreciate you, um, Lord, you so much, my family love you so much. We appreciate all that you're doing for us. Um. We will also to thank you at every given time for what you're doing for us. Um, my father. He want, yeah, he wants talk with you. Uh, when he was here in Canada. And he made a lot of prayers for you. And sending a video to pass on one on one, please. So, my father. Send this little.
Okay, I've seen it, uh, just, uh. Give me a minute, I'll play it. Hold on, I'm gonna play it right away.
Um, but. Oh, dear, put a cha-cha. No, dear, put a nah.
Put up, put up.
Um, but.
Hold on, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna do it again. Very strange, I just. Supposed to put Allah now. The sound is allowed. I'll share it. Is he coming out now?
You are good. Do you understand that? You are good. And the other girls you work with, I did not, I don't expect anything in life. I deal with whatever I see as I see it.
Yes.
I didn't think. I didn't put it into perspective, into any type of perspective. Seeing today. And that I am seeing today, I'm experiencing today. Oh, swaram. I, eh, I am content.
Yes.
My, my. Oh, my goodness, my Prime Minister, there is no name on the earth that fits you. There is no name.
Thank you, thank you, it's all right, I continue from there.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me.
Okay, um, Maz Martin, Biko. Actually, we have a little adjustment. In our program, so that, uh. Our PM, we have opportunity to speak to the public. And everybody is looking forward to hearing it. So, we have, um, Mazie Charles, if you are there. Uh, we might.
To finish.
We might. We might skip some item. We will skip item. Five, three and five, four. And then, we are going to. Go straight to PM address as directed by. One of her high-ranking cabinet member. So immediately, our PM finishes address, then we can go back to item. Item, uh, five, three. Uh, five. Four, and then run down and make sure we conclude this. So, Mazie, um. Charles, can you? Uh, invite our Prime Minister to come.
Allow Uchechi to finish her point, please. Uchechi, run down, just quickly say what you've got to say.
Oh, okay.
Unmute yourself. Go ahead, Uchechi. Unis, go ahead.
In behalf of my family. I want to. Um, say that. Well, we appreciate everything that you're doing for us, Prime Minister, and we are supporting this coming, um. With two hundred dollars, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There were Unis. Yeah, now back to Charles.
Charles, please, I think the microphone is back to you. It's just then. Is Charles there?
So, um, uh, because due to time, we want to make sure that we use our time judiciously. Uh, we have a list of people that we need to be called, that any Prime Minister body. So everybody, please, don't go anywhere, keep your awkward, hold it tight. But we have to do to an advice from a high-ranking cabinet member. We are going straight to item fa, item eight, which is our PM address. So after a PM do his address and we had a response, then we can go back to the, uh, A word G team, and after that, people will now ask questions, and that's how it's going to be. So Mazie Charles, can you invite our Prime Minister to come and give us, uh, his, uh,
Okay, um, thank you very much. Thank you very much, um, once again, I want to thank each other going on far. Um, the color note has been presented, it has been broken accordingly. And, um, we are still in the process somehow. But because of exigencies and the necessity to make sure that the, the writing is done, we are going straight to item eight, which is the Prime Minister's address. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, permit me to welcome the Obatobie. The Nkankapi, Amunkankapi. The strength of Biafra today. Our able Prime Minister of the Biafra Republic Government in exile. He is a lawyer by profession. He is an experienced military officer by profession. He is a political juggernaut by profession. He is a very distinguished gentleman by excellence. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, let us welcome our proud and our able Prime Minister, the person of his excellency. Mazie Simeon. Epa Njoko, before, 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 before.
Good evening, fellow Biafrans in Canada. Good evening, Biafrans all over the world that are watching this program from different platform. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the press that are seated in your different location, listening and watching to my tour of Canada today. Good evening, well-wishers and friends of Biafrans. I am not here to give, uh, 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 speech that will last for hours. But I want to just go straight to bullet point. For those of you who do not understand what we are doing, we are fighting for our freedom. And I believe that everyone in this life and in this world, wherever where you are, the country where you reside in have a history. Now, I want everyone of us here today and those who will listen to this particular speech to note one very important fact. Nigeria state came into being through conquest. This is a fact that nobody can change. Nigeria came into existence through conquest. And the forceful imposition of foreign rule which denied the indigenous people in Niger area the opportunity to negotiate and choose what they wanted. That is the problem. We have lived with this foreign rule and this forceful union for decade. Over one hundred years. That is the problem. Now, I want everyone listening to me today to also understand that after this forceful union of Nigeria, called the Amaga mission. Successive regime both before and after the Shambolic independence, continue to hold the state together. In a seemingly forceful manner, the same pattern and methodology that the conquests and invasion and the colonizer, colonizer, colonizers came in with. They're taught by the forceful and the barriers of the gun, they will continue to kill people for the unity of Nigeria. That also is the problem today. So, this impression that they are creating that a country must remain as crafted from the Amaga mission by the colonialist. And that this country called Nigeria unity is non-negotiable. That is also the problem. We have lived from centuries to century, and today, we are in the era of twenty-first century. We are now in a global village, where the things of the past and the things of the old are changing to become new. And they don't want to change Nigeria with the dangerous diversity that have now emanated from different angle and the different injustices and corruption. And now Nigeria have found itself to become an Islamic state. That is the problem. However, the state has continued to experience instability, insecurity, and swelling lava of so-called agitation like they branded us today for self-determination. The Biafra government in exile, but, and in the homeland called the defacto government has taken deliberation or so-called agitation, from agitation to liberation by using what I called a multi-dimensional approach. Relying on documentary evidence, observations, and descriptive analysis of the Nigeria state. By continuing to expose Nigeria and the nature of the Nigeria eh, to the international community. Especially to the new generational decision-makers that didn't have the knowledge about how Nigeria committed resistance. They have to be educated to know why we are fighting and why we must fight till Biafra is recognized and become an independent state. There is no going back. So they need to be educated to know when this thing comes to their table, the decision they could make that will impact the world. Because this is not just about Africa. But to impact the world positively. Now. This exposition of Nigeria include the pattern of the coexistence among the ethnic, different ethnic groups in Nigeria, including with their dangerous diversity. The extent these different dangerous diversities co-exist. They exhibit the positive for as well as factors that militate against the national integration, i- including when they say the RRR. After the Biafra war. The manner, the government promote national unity and the factor that ignite the so-called, the separatist tendency like they brand us today. The inability to foster sense common identity and the national coexist, consciousness among the different ethnic group and this different dangerous diver- diversities. The continuing promotion of inter-ethnic hatred by this same Nigeria. Every person, single person occupying the highest position or one of the high position in Nigeria today have promoted the inter-ethnic hatred. Which is the reason why of our sister Amaka is here today. Every one of us has been a victim of the Nigeria leaders' promotion of inter-ethnic hatred and on hu- unhealthy rivalry of these diversities, as well as the bad governance rooted in corruption and divisiveness. And above all, the move from the secular state to the Islamic state of Nigeria. Today we have the Muslim Muslim ticket, which even many people from the Christian part never believed it could be possible. They have all happened. It is not only that, there's also ethnic killing, killings in other parts of Nigeria except in Biafra land that we are resisting them today under my leadership. These are the main factors that fuel Biafra agitation and deliberation today, which I am leading. My fellow Biafrans, we have seen the killings of Christians in Nigeria, in different parts of Nigeria, including in Biafra land. We are resisting them. We have seen the promotion of this inter-ethnic hatred which our sister Amaka and every one of us is a victim. Today, the Biafra government have risen to take responsibility of defending Biafrans all over the world. Irrespective of what you believe in, irrespective of whether you support the struggle for Biafra or not. So long as you are being bullied by the Nigeria state as an entity, we are going to rise up to defend you. Whether you believe in me, believe in the Biafra government or not, and it left for you to accept that particular gesture. The government is here to protect every Biafran from A to Z, anywhere you are in the world. Once Nigeria representative or Nigeria as an entity, rise up to bully you. It is then you will know that indeed Nigeria is not for you. My fellow Biafrans, we have made history today. The awareness we have created in Washington DC, United States of America is bringing a shockwave across Africa and across Sahel. We will continue to create this awareness for the new generation decision-makers who may not have ma- ma- much knowledge about the Nigeria existence. My fellow Biafrans, as we are pursuing this liberation of Biafra using diplomatic approach, political approach, we are also pursuing it using armed struggle approach. And that is what we call the self-defense international law. Where Nigeria state has made our place so uncomfortable that we are now very comfortable in exile until we find our way to delegitimize them, demilitarize Biafra land, and then go back to set up a government that work for the people. On this note, I will use this opportunity to invite our sister Amaka, which have faced both backlash, attack, bully from the Nigeria government, including the agent of the Nigeria within Biafra struggle. I have never spoken to Amaka, never till today, and I have not spoken to her, maybe I will speak to her here. But during the course of the Biafra government approach to defend her and we went head-on with the terrorist state and their representatives. Providing evidences and we are ready to provide witnesses for Amaka. We are not just only going to defend her by providing legal services and all that, we are ready to pay the legal fee. Not only that, we will provide witnesses on her behalf. The Afra government will go to any let, we will use Amaka to set example of how a nation and a government should stand up for their citizens. Before that incident of the agent of Nigeria start reaching her, everybody was condemning her statement. And of course, it is only those who are deputed with love for their people, will understand what Amaka went through, that made her a woman to make and utter such statement publicly on a live broadcast. We understood her. Even though she was not part of us. Then. But being a Biafran that she is, even if she didn't accept it then, we understand her pain. It is only the Biafra government under my leadership understood Amaka's pain. And when we boldly stand up for her, it will be withdraw the statement against her. Because it was then, they begin to see things from a different perspective. That's what make us Biafrans.
Yes.
That's why we are different. And today, Amaka is here against all odds. Because she has been cursed according to people who claim they have power to curse people. But there are people are dying in their villages, they don't have the power to kill them. They say they have cursed Amaka because Amaka, they defy him, herself with the Biafra Prime Minister. I am telling you today, Amaka, no curse. Even the one that I have laid upon you before this whole incident. The spirit I carry in me will neutralize every curse, whether, whether from your family, from your village, and that is. I am releasing that power that God has confined in me, that every curse laid on you by anyone before and after. We'll go back to them from today. Just watch and see.
He said.
I welcome you, Amaka. Give Biafra.
He said, he said.
He said, Amata Bia. Oh, oh, don't go kill. Okay, more, oh, if you will now. I sing, he said.
If Amaka is here, can you flash out to the screen, please? She is our new celebrity.
I'm, uh, I think the network kicked her out. Amaka try and access that link again and come in. Just a while ago, the network removed her. And Amaka, use the link and come in, use the link, the same link, you are able to open the camera. And we saw you, you were doing well, so just grab that link and come in and Biafrans want to celebrate you. You are our latest celebrity, we love you.
Join back, you can flash out to the screen if the network.
Alright.
But I just want to let Biafrans understand that gone are those days that Nigeria state would bully any Biafra anywhere in the world, and we allow them to have the few day.
Never again.
It's never gonna happen again. That time is over. And today, we are laying example of how military and army should behave by freeing a Yoruba, uh, soldier who came to kill our people. And of course, he was captured, just like other people, and we let him go free. And that is a big statement for them to understand that that is what we call the rule of engagement. And the trap we set to Nigeria state, they actually fall into this trap. Let us see the game how it's gonna play. They don't wanna talk about the Biafra liberation army, but this has forced them to speak about Biafra liberation army. They are also avoiding mentioning Biafra government. They continue to write IPOB. We have made it very clear, and let me also use this opportunity to say it as it is for people, for, for them, because they continue to use IPOB. We are not IPOB as an organization. We are government of Biafra in exile and the Biafra defacto government in the homeland. We are not IPOB as an organization. IPOB is indigenous people of Biafra, and this government represent indigenous people of Biafra as a nation and as a people, not as organization. And that should be made very, very clear, in case they will not understand it. So not when we do something under this government, do not attach IPOB as an organization to it. I want to send this particular message to be very, very clear to the Nigeria state today. So that there should be addressing whatever we are doing properly to the Biafra government, not attaching IPOB to it. IPOB is a registered organization, and we have moved from there to a government, and that's where we are today. So stop linking us to organization called IPOB, which is a Nigeria pressure, political pressure group. And today, they are no longer relevant in Biafra struggle, because you have used them for many years to kill our people, use them as sacrifice, only to put for political, a particular political interest. That particular time has ended. And if you, if the Biafra agitation was a joke, we have made it reality. It is no longer a joke. Under my leadership, it is not a joke. Thank you very much, everyone, and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, PM. Yeah, please, I don't know, Amaka, if you came in with another name, make sure you rename yourself and come in with your true name. We have a one name user, is that, who's that?
It is very clear that Amaka do not have, do not know how to use the Zoom. You know, when she came in, she was struggling to open the video, so that's a very good one. She can call somebody, the, one of the people in the Canadian rep can give her a call. To know whether she's having difficulties because it's very clear she's not conversant with Zoom. Thank you. Thank you, Pierre. All right, Mazie Charles, is, did you lose?
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm very much here. As a matter of fact, we're trying to get back to Amaka. As best as we can because of her network or whatever, because she said, you know, like kind of network problem. So as best as we can, we have extended a message, the VR text message. If she could keep trying again and come back. But before then, I want to, want to use support to thank our Prime Minister, His Excellency Simon Ewa. For this wonderful address, particularly occurring on the issue of the challenges and circumstances that led our sister Amaka. To say what she did, say and then what happened going forward thereafter. Thank you very much, our Prime Minister, but thank you, and that was a very wonderful address. So but very quickly, I want to call on Finance Minister to give his own response with regards to. What you have said and then this point, if our Prime Minister is very much, I wanna go here. Please, you have the mic. Your honorable, honorable Prime Minister, please respond.
Thank you, thank you, Mazie Charles. Greetings from here, I call our Prime Minister, my boss, His Excellency Mazie Simon Ewa. The one who have the template that we follow. I'm gladly to say I'm one of his disciple, likewise other Biafrans. Yesterday, when I was watching the news. Behold, there was Kamala Harris campaigning. While she was campaigning, they are raising phone at the same time. Behold again. Former President Donald Trump campaigning as well for reelection. Why his Vice President is doing the same thing, raising phone. What is about all this phone, phone, phone? We need to learn how to appreciate our Prime Minister whenever he's around us. Whatever he's doing. So we can support for him to be able to carry the work, the assignment that the Biafran people have given him. He need our support. And for all of us that believe in him. For him to be proud of us and what we are doing. Finance is necessary. We all know that Donald Trump is a billionaire, he have money. At the same time, Elon Musk is also donating to his campaign. And what about the Vice President of the United States of America, Kamala Harris? Likewise, he said, wherever they go, it's all about phone, money, money, money. We Biafran people, we are not exempt from that. We all believe in Biafra, we all are fighting for Biafra to be restored. We want to make our Prime Minister proud. We want to give him the energy, the morale. If you are a true Biafran, after seeing all that is happening. And how the Biafran Republic government under the leadership of our Prime Minister. Fast forward to make sure that Amaka is okay in Canada. What did that tells you? It tells you that we have a government, a government that have the interest of its people. A government that will not abandon its people. Just wonder when Biafra is fully restored, Biafra will be like America. You all know that wherever you are in the world, if you have American passport, the respect, the way they look at you. And we all see what happened this week. Wherever we go down in Washington DC, they don't call us agitators. They don't call us by our titles. They say we are freedom fighters. What are we fighting for? For freedom of our people, which our Prime Minister is heading. If you are a true Biafran, ask yourself. Are you really supporting your Prime Minister? Are you really doing the best you can? Your contribution, is that the best you can give us? We have nations and countries that are fighting. All the whole nations, they don't fight with their bare hand, they fight with logistic. Ask yourself question, how do they get this logistic? How are they able to get the money to fund it? They tax themselves. Biafrans, I urge everyone, I play, I please kindly played with everyone. Let's run around, support our Prime Minister, give him the energy that he deserve. Financially, so he can be able to get this work done once and for all. Don't hold back, please. I, I, I played with you. When you give, give from the bottom of your heart. When you take the collar knot, break the collar knot, say this is your contribution. Give from the bottom of your heart, give the best gift you can give like King, not like Abel. Please, I just wanna make it short to just urge my fellow Biafrans. We see all that is unfolding at the end of the day. Let's appreciate our Prime Minister by supporting him as the chief of the arm staff, as the one in command. Who give the directives to the liberation army. Financially, we need money, we are not hiding mouth, we are not hiding it, we are fighting war with our enemies. If you are genuinely here, please, after the speech of our Prime Minister today. Just kindly, we have over 200, I want to see hand of support. Let's pour support to our Prime Minister. We believe in him, we believe in what we, what he's doing with finance, we will move mountain. Please give the best gift you can give to energizing, to be able to carry on this work that the Biafran people have assigned it to do. Please, I just mention of a powerful rich man, a billionaire name, former President JW, J Trump. Is, he is still soliciting, campaigning, doing fundraising. Kamala Harris Vice President likewise the same. Us are not exemption, please, we need money, we need your support, let's make it rain. Thank you fellow Biafrans, nde wu. Thank you, our Prime Minister and all the members of the Cabinet, Admin Reps and my fellow Biafrans, nde wu, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, thank you very much, our Finance Minister, may God bless you. That's a very wonderful speech in support of what we are currently doing. And with the same spirit and in line with this spirit of our Finance Minister's speech, we have to quickly go. Straight into item number seven for today, item number six. Number six for today's program, which has to do with the presentation of gifts to our Prime Minister. Distribution ladies and gentlemen. Permit me to call on our Canadian rep, Honorable Neman Atabwe. To make this wonderful presentation to appear. Our everyone, over to you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mazie Charles, Maz. Thank you, we are doing a great job today. Thank you, sir, the Prime Minister, Abato Pierre, for your wonderful speech. I, in fact, I just got one message from you, you told us here, and this is real life. But because of what you did and what we did. Peter Obi withdrew his statement of condemnation of Amaka. This is wonderful. You people don't know the magnitude of this statement, it is huge, thank you, sir. Today, Canadians want to show how strong we are in supporting Biafran government in exile. We have over 5,000 Biafrans in Canada, more than that. Just, this is just being conservative. But greater number of these people are not coming out, some don't know what we are doing, some are in the wrong direction. But the few of us who have decided to follow our PM and support him to support our gallant men. We will continue to do our little best until the day Biafra is declared. So while our PM is here, the Biafran liaison of his family gathered their tenants. Drop by drop, measure by measure. And we were able to gather a 4,000 US dollars as a gift to our Prime Minister. Our Prime Minister Canada is presenting you a 4,000 US dollars. And this gift is given as a group apart from whatever awarding we are doing now. And also on this note, I will also want you to know that our province are active. You approve the four provincial admins. And in order to show you that from that day, you did this, they are very active. I will be calling these provinces to come and do their awarding to our Prime Minister in the next two minutes. We will be first, the first province to come and wallodging to our Prime Minister is Alberta Province. Alberta Province, then.
Um, um, remember we are, we have adopted a German, not.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Yeah, correct.
So 4,000 a German is what Canada is using to say, thank you, sir, for coming. I use this to support our gallant men to do the needful. Alberta Province, can you, in the name of the admin Jen, the Wari Prime Minister Oji. Based on how much you people have contributed as a province. Jen, are you there? If you are there, can you quickly signify your hand? While Jen is getting ready, Ontario admin, if you are ready, can you please, okay, Jen is here. Jen, into.
Yeah, I greet my Prime Minister, I greet all the Cabinet members. Alberta Province is supporting with 400 a German.
Thank you, we call Kuproniaka. Jen is the admin of Alberta Province where I belong. Alberta Province comprises of Calgary and Edmonton, so we thank God. Then Ontario Province admin is Charles Maz, Charles.
Yes, yes. Yes, my everyone. Um, and my, a German, on behalf of Ontario Province, now I'm about to on jail. With the sum of 300 dollars.
300 a German.
Thank you, thank you so much. And Saskatchewan Province, the admin is Mazie Casman Opera. Casman Opera, if you're here, can you please stand up while the Prime Minister Oji on the behalf of your province? And what is going on Manitoba, um, admin should be getting ready, Omar, go ahead, Casman.
Our Prime Minister, nde wu, welcome you, the good guy. There were, they will welcome her. Um, because. Maybe a horse or, or with a note. If you cannot do a great thing, but you can still do small thing in a great way. Remember, it was not raining when Noah built the ark. Bukunu, whatever you are, for that man, this thing is real, lekano Biafra, lekano Biafra. Ndewo, uh, anyone on a Saskatchewan, I give 200 o German, she gave. Only share, only do I, the good guy, o tidi zoom, man, you're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mazie Casman, that is a admin for Saskatchewan. Saskatchewan are the food basket of Canada, they are more of farmers, a lot of farmers. Uh, Manitoba, Manitoba admin is Omar Idade. Omar Idade, if you are here, can you raise your hand so that you can come in, Biawari Prime Minister Oji? Okay, she's here, good, well done, Omar.
Greetings, our Prime Minister, thank you for coming to Canada, we appreciate your effort. And on behalf of Manitoba Province, we are supporting your coming with 268 German.
Thank you so much, Omar is our, our admin in Manitoba. She's very active and very, very, very active, thank you, Omar. The next province is British Columbia. So the guy that we represent British Columbia, is he ready, is Michael? If you're here, can you please come out and the Wari Prime Minister Oji? British Columbia is William Uzo.
Is that Michael? Is that Michael?
No, William. William Uzo. Is William Uzo here? I have seen him. The next person, if he's not there, is Quebec.
Uzo, hold on, William Uzo is here, let's hold on.
Okay, good.
Uh, William Uzo, is that you or unmute yourself? Are you the one we're calling? Yes. Unmute yourself.
Okay, William, well done.
Okay, William, hold on, open your microphone, open your camera, William. Okay, you did that one minute?
Yes, okay.
This takes a little bit of procedure, all right, I'm gonna add you, okay, William, go ahead.
Greetings, my PM, Mazie Simon Ewa. Yeah, welcome to Canada. Uh, one thing that fascinates me about you is your bravery. Your resilience and. Your consistency. Uh, I'm so happy to be part of what you are doing. And, and that note, on behalf of my fellow Biafrans in British Columbia. Uh, we welcome you with the sum of 150 a German, you're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. So the next province is Quebec. And Quebec will be represented by Mazie Emeka Uche. Mazie Emeka Uche, if you are here, raise your hand and let the Prime Minister see you so that God Wari Oji. Um, I'm preparing Mazie Uche to be there.
Amaka, unmute yourself.
Emeka, yeah, good, look at him, he's there.
Um. Biafra Queen. Yeah. Yeah, Excellency, I'm a father, buana, boge, aquara jima zen, nde kalo.
Yeah.
Aquara jin dibbo. As a, dibbo du mene, as a, naso assasibo. That's the tribe, tribe, and we were, and then the, we were, Biafra du mene, man de bi no, man de bi nama. Anama eji. Aname eji, na ha, nde Quebec, na na bata, your Excellency, Eva Simon Joko. Now Quebec, nejukeno. Nah, Quebec, nee, juqueno. A German, a hundred and fifty, we're not saying no. So I'm a man saying no.
Thank you, thank you, Mazie. The last but not the least is Nova Scotia pla- um, province. So Mazu Gochupon Eba. Mazu Gochupu, eh, Gawadi, on behalf of Nova Scotia province. Ma- Mazu Gochupu, eh, the one Eba. If you're here, raise your hand so that they can spotlight you.
His excellency, uh, Epa Simon Joko.
Very much, thank you very much. Thank you very much, um, uh, all the provinces. They will, God bless you, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Without wasting more time, I want to call on our second children presentation, one of our doctor.
Um.
Yeah, before we go forward.
No, please, don't, don't, uh, we have to go back to five two. Because a lot of women have not done yet.
Okay, the women, okay, I thought, I thought our women. So, okay, in that regard, I chama, I conclude. So in that regard, I want to call on my second in command. Uh, the second M C, the personal Mazze Martin, please complete the list for the women. Uh, over, oh gee, energy, thank you.
Maz, you stopped, you stopped at two thirty, so. You continue because the other women are waiting. Yeah, okay, unmute yourself, unmute yourself, Maz, unmute yourself.
Put your mic.
Open your mic. Yeah, good, 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 good.
Put your camera as well, you locked it.
Open your mic and open your camera and then move on. Thank you so much, my people. So doing goods. Mazze Martin, are you there? If you're not there, Charles can continue because we don't want to waste time.
Mazze Martin, what's happened?
Mazie Charles.
You are co-host, now you can do everything.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Yeah, you can open your camera as well, you are co-host, so you can do it without, uh, asking.
Is my camera off?
It's off.
Put it on.
Please don't waste time, please.
Please, if it's difficult, you can begin to call, you can hear your voice.
I, I can't get into that.
Yeah, call, we are hearing you, just mention the names.
Okay.
The next person is the right same room.
Just a moment. Mazze Martin, what's happening? Yeah, I'm trying to get back to my this, I could do, just a moment, I'm working on it.
Click on, on that. Ah, yes, let me continue, um.
Okay, Maz, Charles, can you continue?
No problem, let me continue. Yes.
You can go on so that you relieve him of that body.
Yes.
You have the same list?
Yes.
Don't worry, let me run through it so that I don't want us to waste up. Um, Dorat Emelum, are you here? If you are not here, if you're here, please raise your hand. Uh, Clementine Isanya, are you here? Please raise your hand so they can.
Is that, is that our old doctor, Dorothy? Is that our old doctor, Dorothy?
No, is a, Emelum is a different person.
Okay.
Okay. Madonna Dominic, Madonna, are you here? And Madonna have seen you here. Can you raise your hand so they can spotlight you?
Is that Madonna, Madonna Ogad, Ogadie?
Yes, 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 he is.
Okay, Madonna, unmute yourself. Madonna, unmute yourself. Madonna is ready now.
Okay. Yes, so.
All right, you're here, Madonna.
Go ahead.
Yeah, are you hearing my voice?
Yes.
I don't know if they are hearing my voice.
We are hearing your voice, Madonna, please talk so that we can move on. Hello, okay, let me see. Raise your hands.
Okay, are you hearing my voice now?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm very, very excited today. Thank you very much, our His Excellency, the Prime Minister, Mazze Simon Eba. We are very, very excited. We thank you and your dogged entourage. Thank you for your consistency because he he could look him in. Thank you, you are the hope that we have in this part of the world. In fact, when we remember Biafra, you, you are the only person, the only hope we have. In fact, it's, it's in this struggle that we realize that. We realize that all the men that we have back home are men. Some of them have sold us. In fact, they sell us and sell our children. But we, in the end, we still thank God, even when Abraham asked God. If, 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 if you can find at least three persons that are, or five persons that are righteous, God said, if there is five. You are among those guys, you are among those able men, you are among those our handsome men. When I remember you. The only one. We thank you, we appreciate you, we can't even thank you enough. Yeah, man, when I start going to mall, I say, what am I going to buy? I say, I'm going to buy a fufa. But the other song, song that I had, it made me to still remember. That song that I used to sing whenever I remember you, Simon. I don't know. What, what else will I do? If I'm giving all this love, what can I continue to give God glory, to make pride, to be pride in the Lord? In fact, the, um, African market. Because sometimes they don't even get a garden egg, and that was what was in my mind. I said, oh. Lo and behold, when I went there, I saw garden egg. I said, oh, good. And I'm looking for something else. I said, okay, this is the awkward. The precious peanut butter. So I had to buy them for my dear Prime Minister Simon. Thank you.
Nice one, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, um. Because of time, we don't have the time. When you are called up, just use one, one and a half minutes to say what you want to say and give what you want to give. So if Celestin Isanya here, if Celestina is not here, Justina. Justina, you, are you here? If Justina is not here, Gladys, a culture, please get ready. If I call your name, raise your, raise your hand up so we can pick you up right away.
Yeah, uh, Moby Dena, Moby Dena, take it easy. Uh, Justina, some of them may not know how to raise their hands. Uh, just find Justina, let's see. Uh, Justina, can you unmute yourself?
Did you see her?
Uh, can you speak up? Are you the Justina we're looking for?
Yes. Okay.
All right, uh, can you please, uh, can you please put on your camera, please?
Two minutes, please.
All right.
Hello, hi, hi, Prime Minister Mazze Simon, I will welcome you to Canada. We are very pleased to have you with us today. And we are very proud of everything that you have done. We are very appreciative of your work. We thank Chukwua Kikea Biamah who brought you into our midst, that you will speak for us. When many Biafrans, we are, uh, having high blood pressure. Some of them ended up in the hospital. We thank you so much for all you're doing. We pray for more strength to you, more wisdom and knowledge in what you do, and we thank you, ministers and all that is supporting you and what you have been. We thank you. Thank you, our fellow Biafrans here. I thank you, Sister Nina and all Canadians that are here. We welcome you. We thank you for your gift and your support for what we are doing. I will, I would just give a little gesture. I mean, I have heard people give us an orgy. I mean, people have given a, uh, fufa, some people have given orgy. So I would just give us an orgy because it goes with the package. So I will give a hundred dollars to support with what we are doing to our Prime Minister. I think you.
So much, thank you, thank you. Yeah, remember to say, Gemma. Yeah. One, two minutes only. Justina, a culture, please raise your hand, you are here again. Uh, one, ma, one, da, Gladys Reha, Gladys Reha. If you're here, that will be fine.
Justina, okay, uh, Ju- another Justina, was it, was it Justina, just quickly?
Gladys.
Okay.
Gladys Reha.
Gladys, uh, we have, uh, two Gladys here, okay. Gladys A Culture, is that the one?
Yes.
Unmute yourself, Gladys. All right, uh, let's have you. Gladys.
I welcome our Prime Minister to Canada. We appreciate all he has been doing. God will continue to bless him. I welcome you with, uh, two hundred dollar a German.
Thank you, thank you, Sister Gladys. You are a doer.
You sound like my sister from, uh, from Ishan. Are you from Ishan?
Yes.
All right, Ogo.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to call on, uh, Wada OJ Okoli, OJ Okoli. If you are here, please raise your hand. Uh, Chizoma Obonaya. If you're.
Oh, is it Okoya, Okoli, what is it?
And, uh, Wada. Wada Julian Ogu, if you're here, raise your hand. As you raise your hand, they will be picking you up and you'll be coming to give.
There is a, there is one hand up, uh, Moby Nena, Nkuru. Would that be one of the?
Yes, 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 yeah, yes.
Okay, Nkuru is there, Nkuru, as you unmute your mic, you can, uh, open your camera at the same time. Uh, do that, please. Uh, Juliana Ogu, unmute yourself and open your camera at the same time. So that we'll go it very quickly.
Yes.
Okay, good, uh, Nkuru, please unmute yourself. You have not unmuted your mic. Nkuru, open your mic, all right.
Can you see me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead, yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
First of all, I'm thanking God for this special gift to the people of Biafra, the Alberta of Biafra, our Prime Minister. His El- uh, Excellency. Mazze Simon Eba, Njoko, and his cabinet. On your bonna mention, your name in a negative way. Or think of anything evil against our Prime Minister. Mazze Simon Eba, Booney Chuku Rockwater, Nogaz Rockwater, and the Biafra. Think anything bad against this young, beautiful, handsome man. May God protect you and guide you and all your cabinet in the mighty name of Jesus. We look fifty dollars now, yo. Um, our, our sister. That is one hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. So Juliana is here in the screen, Juliana, go ahead, unmute yourself. Why, your, your Prime Minister is today, he got here.
Okay, unmute yourself, Juliana.
Okay, okay, I need to go. Alright, um, they said that the Kola is not, does not, uh, understand English. So I'm gonna go to the language of, uh, heaven. According to our leader, Mazze Namdekan. Now I see our PM. His Excellency, Mazzi Epa, Simon, in Joko, ESN. No. The leader, Chineke. Need, need a run. We bro, we bro, I need see. Obi, the, you know, though. And the Chineke, game, maybe, uh, here in a, who's okay. I wait for Biafra, I enter in our la Biafra. After December second. And I must see, they gemma, hundred, uh, a gemma. They got a reggae, oh, why, oh, gee. My name is fifty dollar, fifty a gemma, fifty a gemma. They post rookie, my favorite food, anyway, it's getting early. Favorite food of, uh, anyways, is my favorite, I need, it's never easy, ke. I have, oh, two pretty. For the, we're gonna, boy, I, 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 I. And she remevan, now, see, I'm the post rookie, yeah. He wait, I'm gonna be a balanced diet, in area. I can, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good. Um, I diggy, if I, this battle, cherry, cherry, I need, when, when Mary. Now, I see one, now, now, stay near. Ca, it's why he's a, not those, you know, be, oh, be, our leader, Mazze Namdekan, who this week, we are, in a, it's gonna, oh, begin, I, 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 I. Corner, I go, I go, I go.
Everybody's testified, you are the good guy. Say, you are good BM, you are good. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm supporting BM with fifty a gemma, thank you.
Mm hmm. Thank you. Chinazza, God bless you. Right on.
All right. Thank you. Austin, please unmute yourself. Austin, please unmute yourself. Austin, please unmute yourself. Okay, Austin is not able to unmute. Uh, Ugo A, please unmute yourself. Ugo A, please unmute yourself. Ugo A is the Austin, did you change your name to Chinazza or is it Chinazza? Okay, unmute yourself for the same. Can you please unmute yourself? No way. Uh, Marzi Chukodi, please unmute yourself. Marzi Chukodi, go ahead.
Please turn my camera. Huh? Good evening lovers of freedom. Please, uh, my, that you please turn my, my camera, cancel my face.
Uh, please just go ahead because we have a risk of this camera. There are a lot of false people here. We can hear your voice, just please make do with that, please bear with us.
Okay.
Who is this Noah that wants to, that wants to control our mic?
Good evening lovers of freedom, good evening Biafran. Good evening my excellency, my this is Ben Jokun, the Biafra Prime Minister. I thanks all Biafra cabinets, also greeted Biafra media teams. My name remains Marzi Chukodi Paul, I represent Benar Republic. Uh, Marzi, Benar Republic made a donation during the weekend. But what we still do, I'm trying to join but I couldn't join, so. Benar Republic have made a donation of one hundred and eight five dollar for the Biafra fundraising. Please Marzi, I don't know if I'm allowed to name those who made it possible as usual.
Um, please you will do it in the next fundraising, this is Canada Town Hall. Huh?
It's alright, talk about it.
Okay, thank you. Now become, uh, then a fundraising, yeah, for the weekend fundraiser, always make sure you make yourself available. That was done yesterday. Next time today we'll give you a chance to do it.
Yes, I'm fine, I'm fine. Can somebody help you?
Marzi Chukodi, do you understand me?
Yeah.
Thank you, I think you got that. Thank you very much, Ugo D. Yeah, Ugo, I called you earlier, but go ahead now you have the mic.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Um, I don't have a long story to tell. The only thing I'm saying is, thank you, my Prime Minister. Thank you for the entourage, those who go everywhere with him. Those who stay nightless days, like every night restless, going all over the place. Sending the messages, may the almighty God bless you all. And our gallant, uh, gallant, gallant man in the, in the bush. Guarding our, protecting our people, protecting everybody. I use this opportunity to say, thank you, kudo. I, I thank you, my Prime Minister. Because you are untouchable, nobody can touch you, nobody can reach you. Because you are. So, um, hello?
Please go ahead, go ahead, please.
Okay, uh, in energy. Uh, our, um, our Prime Minister, Oje, whoa. One hundred and fifty a gemma. So. Nah, what, why, whatever he had not see a gun he do. He need made the.
Uh, mommy, mommy, hold on, I want to see me try to go see my kid, but you're good. Come up on down, where you never answer, what, 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 how about that with a fake name? Just hold on, open your.
I hope I will come back.
You, you're just one minute.
Oh, there are no.
We're not, uh, Kevin Lawrence, can you unmute yourself, Kevin Lawrence? Please Kevin Lawrence, yes, go ahead, yes.
Uh, I have a, a song for, uh. Mister President, uh.
Huh?
I have a song.
You have a song?
Yes.
The song for who?
Mister Simon.
Ah, okay, okay, go ahead.
Yo, Mister Simon, you are very great.
Okay. That must be a very.
Powerful.
Marzi, any quality, any, any quality camera?
That, that's no one of us, that's no one of us. Ah, okay, ah, okay, no wonder. Because I wanted to very carefully, I wanted to hear the song he want to sing. Thank you. And then this person, this Noah. This Noah, you have been trying to control mics and all that, unmute yourself, let me see whether it was there, an error. Noah Mandanis, unmute your mic, let me see.
Yes, I would like to, I'm Noah Mandanis.
Okay, now this one is also a demon, a demon who remove you. Um, who is this iPhone? Unmute yourself iPhone. Please hold on Mama, please hold on one minute. Who is this iPhone? Unmute yourself iPhone.
Yes.
Yeah? Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, this is Chinwet, Chinwet Kekke.
Oh, this is from China talking.
Chinwet Kekke.
There are two iPhone, yeah, Chinwet, okay, are you there?
Yes, I'm here to welcome my, my. Um, uh, my, my majesty Simon Eka and his cabinet members. Um, giving hundred a gemma to welcome you people. And to say you, to you people, welcome.
Thank you.
And to say to our Prime Minister, he is a very handsome, good guy.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, uh, the last iPhone here, unmute yourself iPhone. Uh, Peter, I know, I'm gonna allow the video, I know what I'm doing. Peter, you are writing on the comment section, allow us to do this thing, please. Uh, iPhone, please unmute yourself. This last iPhone, unmute yourself. Okay, this one is not one of us, obviously. Yeah, it's not one of us, obviously. Okay, um, one minute. Okay, uh, Mama, please, uh, make a camera again now.
There is one.
Mama. Okay, you don't even know how to open it.
I don't even know.
That would be a long lesson now. So, nobody is there to open the camera for you?
I don't know, I don't have anybody. If, if I touch it now, I'm gonna miss you.
Don't worry, we can, we can hear your voice, let me do your voice. Just round up on your point, please.
Okay, okay, as I was saying. Uh, I seen only a blank camera here, the man, organati, organato wall of the man. So, I give this opportunity. Now, what our Prime Minister see a, eh, be who, who see ke, he need made the man. And oh God is the rewarder. Now say, we ready this opportunity now say, ndiya na mabe ozo, agesibata, join now. Uno na try eh, were no number. Our, uh, Canadian, they are saying, uh, uh, representative. Were no number ya, ogetienu, akakunu tata. So, inha nekwenka, agameji. One hundred and fifty a gemma, may you welcome. And the unga akunyea, na accounts are units, units ge, ge, eh, sent here, okay? Because it has been very difficult for me. It's not that I'm not seeing what you guys are doing. You are doing extremely wonderful job from A to Z. May the almighty God, the creator of heaven and earth, the owner of the whole universe, the God of our ancestors. May he continue to bless each and every one of you in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. He said, thank you so much, uh, thank you Mama, thank you very much. Uh, Wada AE, you're asking why is your camera not on? The camera, that's all the one we ask people to open, and you were not there. You want to open your camera now, let's give you the privilege. Open your camera and I'm gonna bring you in. Wada AE, you can open your camera now, can you do that? All right.
I'm doing it, right there, baby.
Okay, I'm gonna bring her in. No, okay, unmute yourself. Okay.
Oh, you are doing.
Go ahead.
Uh, edge move there and then about that, Marzi Stephen Okoli forty eight. Please can you raise your hand and come in, so you, you got what a PM Oji. Marzi Stephen Okoli forty eight, thank you.
Okay, let's hear Wada.
Nde wo. Hmm, uh, our Prime Minister Nde wo. Thank you for coming. We are grateful to welcome you, we Canadians, to welcome you now, we miss today. Uh, welcome your entourage. Welcome the media team. All protocols observed. I'm very happy to welcome you. I took my hair oh.
Uh huh.
But I know I am here, I'm on my, I'm here, I know. I took a mom, mm, 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 more than many, I'm a boy and many, mom, yeah. Not just in my head, I have horses in them, so you're a boy, yeah, open them, then. Man, I see now, I do, I'm, I had our Prime Minister, man, I, huh. Or ta, or to, get out, who was, or, as you mean, you know that. So, eh, di, uh, who be there go thirty dollar can go there. When I see, can you thirty dollar a gemma, ma can, more than many, Nde wo.
Nde wo. Thank you, amen, Nde wo. Marzi Stephen Okoli, can you signify your hand, Biawalo, our PM Oji Biko? Marzi Stephen Okoli, uh, Biko, um, pastor, identify where he is and.
I've looked for Stephen Okoli, I didn't see, and so, okay, that must be this.
Yeah, forty eight.
Right.
Stephen Okoli forty.
Unmute yourself, Marzi Stephen. Is that you? Unmute and confirm.
Yes, he is.
Unmute yourself, Marzi Stephen. Please unmute yourself, Marzi Stephen.
Is he finding it difficult?
I don't know. Nah, it's, I'm not finding it difficult, madam, it depend on where I am right now.
Yeah.
Well, uh, just say, I just wanna say thank you to our Prime Minister. Uh, regarding to all the thing he has been doing for us, Biafrans, you know. Sometime I reflect back, uh, I don't know what. That team today, what would I be the hope of our leader, the hope of the eighty million Biafrans? Well, we really appreciate you from the bottom of our heart, we're the Canadians, and, uh.
We cannot hear you again, no.
Oh, wow.
Mommy, can you hear him?
Uh, I don't know, uh, I don't know anymore here, so, I understand. Okay, unmute yourself again Stephen, at least mention, uh, your. Need a warrior of the Canadian.
Can you hear me now, am I coming out loud and clear?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, well, yeah, I just wanna give our Prime Minister another big buzzer for all he has been doing for us. And, uh, we really appreciate him for everything he's doing and, um, for his tenacity, determination. And, uh, continue to do what he's doing. We are in support of him, we are backing him up, dear night. Yeah, anyway, I'm sorry that I'm not, uh, able to participate today as much as other people physically. Uh, just wanna use, um, the amount of five hundred dollar a gemma to break color knot and, um, as a start of it. And I welcome you home.
Thank you, thank you so much, Marzi. In a message, I need me to go take.
Uh, a gemma, thank you.
Yeah, kaja, kaja.
Yeah.
Nde wo. Yes, uh, whether you are a man or woman who is from Canada family. If you haven't had your name, just raise your hand with the icon and they will identify you, Gabby Award. Because we have gone through the list, both male and female. So, if you are here, just raise your hand and you'll be called upon, please, everybody in Canada. And you want to do something, please do that. So, um, our MC, please take over, we have to continue with the program.
Marzi Charles, are you still there?
Marzi Charles, I, I saw him two minutes ago, is he off? Yeah, he's here.
Yes, I'm very much here, I'm very much here, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, without wasting time, I want us to go straight to the introduction of, um, uh, this, this, the second presentation for the children. Do we, do we give priority to people that raise their hands or? While you're doing the program, uh, and they raise their hands, we are just gonna interrupt you and respond, is that okay?
Yes, yes.
Yes, it's okay, that's okay that way.
Yeah.
All right, uh, let's do this, uh, Onyekachi, please unmute yourself.
Right.
Uh, good evening.
Onyekachi, go on. Good evening.
Yes, uh, good, good evening, um, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm coming in from a different time zone. Uh, I'm from the Nigerian, I'm Afamwo, uh, uh, O'Onyekachi, uh, Obidocha Johannes. Um, yes, uh, Biko, I, um, the reason why I, I, um, thought to join in. Um, was in view of the fact that this is, um, a gathering of the Ndiva in the Canada. And, um, this, I do suppose, um, this, uh, sure happens to be, um, a thing of interest. To many of us, especially those of us back home. And, uh, where you might rightly guess, and that is on the issue of, um, Amaka Zonberger. That's, um, they say the Amaka Zonberger. Well, I am a Onyewu, that's, that is. And, um, uh, will I first start by just implying, uh, your forgiveness, that's, um. On, on basis of probably my ignorance or the ignorance as of the many of us. And that is on the issue of the asserting of her identity. Now, the reason why I'm, I'm bringing this subject.
I think we don't have time for this.
No, uh, yeah, we are not.
Sorry, sorry. We are in a program that we are running a program, this is not question and answer. When it is time for question and answer, you come in again. Our PM, we had that opportunity to answer questions, but for now. We are moving forward with the program, Biko.
Yeah, my, I was trying to respond to her, to him. The question and answer is permitted, but. In my own, this sister have identified as, um, a Biafra, she had stood with us and she represent us, so. He was here with us a while ago, and, uh, only that the network didn't allow her stay long. So, you were just coming here to. Just, uh, you know, I don't know, let me not use a word that you may not like. But please, this is not relevant. Thank you, and now we're gonna take the mic away from you. Thank you very much, please, uh, go ahead, uh, uh, Marzi Charles.
Marzi Charles. Mrs. Okocha Neba.
So, at this point, I think, um, I wanna take over the microphone right now. And then let us quickly go straight to the, uh, the second stanza for the children's presentation. I think the person of, um, our little baby girl, Joanne, Peter Chuku. Um, that should be, uh, item seven, under our present, under our agenda here. So, please, do we have, uh, the mother of, um. Of this, our little girl, Joanne, Peter Chuku. Uh, let her give us our, the second presentation for the children, thank you. Onyebah, you have the mic.
Sister, uh, Inis, your daughter's turn. Unmute yourself, we are not hearing you.
Unmute your mic.
Okay, look like she's not ready, okay, we can give opportunity to Gladys Okocha's son.
Yes.
Yeah, she can do that, why she get.
Hold on, please, Inis came with the name Peter, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
Yes, 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 the name, the name confuses us, we didn't remember. We didn't remember that you came in with, uh, the name Peter, please let's, uh, have a.
Let's come with Inis, that's what we are known for.
We are looking, we keep looking for Inis, and, uh, you came with this name.
But initially, you were already knew that the name is Peter.
Uh, we forget, I need to forget, if we don't want them.
Chance of God, go ahead.
Okay, so Inis, go ahead, Joanne.
Okay, Joanne, mother. Go ahead, Joanne, we are listening.
My name is Johanna.
Inis, we cannot hear her, why, why is this speaker not good?
Is low.
Just get, get the phone closer to her. Get the phone closer to her. Yeah, let her speak now, please, speak up, speak up.
Can you, I am. My name is Johanna Peter. My name is Johanna. Go ahead. The name is to be loud. My name is Johanna Peter Chuku. Can you hear her?
Yes, we can hear her. Let her be, let her be live, her, let her concentrate on the camera.
Yes.
Oh, no, it's not working. Inis, please, you might need to go out and come in again with a fresh entry, if possible. And maybe use, um, another device, maybe this one have a, have a speaker problem. So that we enjoy this beautiful girl, she has a lot to say, and, uh, we're not enjoying this.
Yeah, okay.
Her presentation is superb.
Yeah.
Okay, let it, uh, let's, let us not, uh.
Uh, mother Gladys, so, Chukodi Okocha. I think.
Can you let, can you let, can you let me in on my phone? Yes.
On your phone, yeah, come in on your phone, I'll let you in right away. Or you have to sign out from this. You will sign out, so that the, we don't be, go, sign up from the other device, unless you're calling your phone.
Okay.
So, I think. Yeah, while waiting for her to do that, can we quickly get?
What, uh, Marzi Charles, when you will, let's, let's deal with this. Uh, what you, did you bring her in, and now what name did she come in with?
I did, she come in with her name, Uchechi.
Okay.
She come in with her name. Please, we can still take it like this, because some of it.
Uh, hold on, please, uh, please. Uh, Uchechi, I just, I made you co-host so that you'll be able to access your mic and everything, all right?
Okay, good.
Uh, let's see.
Okay. Perfect, now you can go on, okay, perfect. Can, can you hear her now? Yes.
There it is.
Perfect.
Put that phone on a horizontal mode, make it horizontal.
My name is. Okay, you don't have to tell me every time. My name is Johanna Peter Chuku. I am six years old. Our hero, the living hero. A true hero is not defined by their strength, but by their ability to inspire and lead others. Marzi Simon Napa, you are our hero. Your resilience, optimism and determination gives us the assurance that soon.
Okay.
Do I have to start from the start?
Okay.
Our hero, the living hero. A true hero is not defined by the, by their strengths, but by their ability to inspire and lead others. Marzi Simon Napa, you are our hero. Your resilience, optimism and determination gives us the assurance that soon there will be hope and not fear. You're, you are determined, courageous and brave, you do not give up in your battles. You are the light that shines in the darkness. When I see videos of hungry children, the homeless, motherless and fatherless. With all hope, I weep for them, but knowing fully well that you are fighting for them gives us peace of mind. We applaud you, we thank and appreciate you for fighting for our future. Biafra is our future, Biafra is our home. We welcome you to Canada, Marzi Simon Napa, we love you, have a great day in Canada.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. That's an amazing presentation from little girl Joanne. God bless you. Once again, put your hands together for our little baby girl. Colamayaka. I find, that's fun. So, I think at this point.
Marzi Charles, did you off your camera? I cannot spot that you did, what did you off your camera?
Oh, sorry, um, okay, yeah, that's me, can you see me?
I'll check the dress.
Yes, so that's it, thank you. So, at this point, um, we highly appreciate our little girl, Mother Joanne, Peter Chuku. So, um. In that regard, can we also quickly get back to, um. The other person, in the person of, um. What's her name? The second presenter, uh, no, is it the third presenter? Chukodi Okocha, let us have your presentation immediately, still under children's presentation. Sister Gladys, is your son ready to Chukodi Okocha?
Let us know the device, that, let us know the device is coming in with, is he coming with the name Okocha, okay, that's it, all right.
Please, the, the mic is yours. All right.
I think it's ready. All right, oh, yeah. Ibo Kuenu.
Hey.
Ibo Kuenu.
Hey.
Ibo Kuenu. Good evening, sir, Prime Minister, my name is Chukudi Ikocha. I'm fourteen years old, on behalf of Biafra and childrens of Biafra in Canada, we welcome you to Canada and all your cabinet. We thank and appreciate you for the wonderful work you and your cabinet are doing to restore Biafra. We are ready to go home to the promised land, God bless you, sir, Nde wo.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
That is a very fast and a very quick one.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Very quick, thank you very much. Uh, oh, each year, support the Okocha. We will each year, thank you very much. So, without wasting much time, before going into the next stanza of the program. Then we actually once again, get back to the audience, I want to pass off, uh, Van Van Van. Uh, we want to talk about individual and the continental breaking of color knot. We have our various continental reps that are here, uh, that are very much available with us here. And they wanted to support what the Canada, uh, bridges are doing. And, uh, in that regards, and following what we have here in our agenda. Whomever that is representing us continentally, we have the North, uh, the North American reps. We have, uh, European rep and other continental representatives. If you know you are here with us, please, uh, may you take the lead, Pastor Van Van Van. Identify them and let them support us and then pray the color modes to support the Canada.
You mean, the reps, I don't know, who, who are the people, uh, who should identify, the reps?
If, if you can, from your own name, we have, uh, North American reps, we have the European reps and African reps.
Okay, all the reps, okay.
All the reps.
Rap in the, yeah, if you rap in the Zoom, uh, I think they want the reps to break color notes. Just, uh, raise your hands and we'll identify you and spotlight you, please.
So, why that is?
Why we wait for that, we have two hands up, Bam Bam Bam.
Why?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mazi Chas.
God bless you.
Thank you, Mazi Chas, all right, is academic kindness? Can you please unmute yourself? And I'm sure you would like to catch your camera on, go ahead and do that, yeah, at the same time.
Yeah, it's all right, uh, as it is, it's all right, as it is now. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and lovers of freedom. Uh, good evening, the same, Akotemporalas, to the Canadian people, I wanted to see Amaka. Uh, Amaka.
You missed her, you came late, Amaka was here, but you, didn't see her.
Uh, tell Amaka that his academic highness is behind her. Although the prime minister has already done that in his fullness. And the baby that spoke before the coming of, um, you know, Okocha. Is hereby supported by his academic highness fifty fifty, which is equivalent to hundred a gemma. Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, academic kindness.
All right, we have, um, Elum, Elum Emmanuel, please unmute yourself. Elum Emmanuel, okay, go ahead.
Da, good evening, Biafra people, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm calling from Lagos, Dizou Nigeria. I'm very, very happy for what you people are doing for us. You can see the echo of our, what, uh, our Apple PM are doing. They do it, I hear it in a hard way, because they don't even know what to hear in peace, they hear it in pieces now. I'm so much happy, I want to applaud you people that work together with him. I say congratulations, your work, you have had for everywhere, globally and everywhere, hearing what your people are doing. And so I just want to appreciate you people, thank you, I had my case here, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you, hello. Thank you.
All right, please, Mazi Chas, uh, we, we are here to have any hand up, uh, are there no reps?
Thank you, so, okay, um, I should take over the mic, right? As of now.
Yes.
Yeah, so without wasting time, um, I want our minister for information. How can Christian to please give us a little interlude? Uh, while we put one or two things together for the question and answer. It's gonna come out for the public, this is almost time for question and answer. Whatever that bothers you, whatever that you don't understand, based on what we are doing or about the Biafra meditation and all that. Uh, the next agenda will be question and answer, but before then, please, let us have a little interlude from our honorable minister for information and communication. Uh, heavily supported by Pastor Bam Bam Bam, the deputy minister. So please, can we have a little interlude and going forward, thank you.
Yeah, uh, Bam Bam Bam, can we play, um, Simon Epa the good guy? Simon Epa the good guy. Sunny, do you have that song, I saved, I don't have a saved song. Check YouTube, just type on YouTube, Simon Epa the good guy. YouTube on, they carry this thing, uh, with all post, uh, off and on, I don't know, we need to, if we should have it. Hold on. Should I give you on WhatsApp? WhatsApp about Telegram? WhatsApp about Telegram, Bam Bam Bam, where should I send you? You send it to, okay, send it to Telegram or WhatsApp anyway, WhatsApp is better. Okay, check WhatsApp now. All right, while we get that music, we have, uh, Mrs. You, Mrs. You, unmute yourself. Mrs. You, unmute yourself. MSU.
Hello.
There, you have the mic, please.
There, I'm a Toby, you can't come to Canada and I'm there, I will not answer you. How are you, sir? Thank you for all you do. We are grateful. My name is Uche, Uche Yekuru. And, um, I just want to welcome my prime minister. Uh, yeah, I will, I will support, my husband is here too, and he has been wanting to join, uh. Want to say hi?
Hi.
I want to say. I'm a Toby.
Odogu, and we're two yafa, Odogu Kebu.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for all you are doing for us. The day the lady came, the person came, I didn't know where. But we go, we found, check out your. We go, but she might kill with your power and your power. I'm asking them, they can't look up the level or not, we go. Before we like, he did make a money, I didn't want to go in as well, we go. About to be there, they believe in me, maybe not, he gave me the way, we could just see that. Eighty fifty dollar, fifty a gemma, when I support you, when you move to fifty, a gemma when I support you. I got a dream, bye.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, send it to Nena. And then Nena knows how she can get, but she did after, after me. For a longer time, I, I went to Nigeria and I came back, my mom passed on. So she has not been communicating, she should be a leader, like me, I love to be a leader, I'm a leader already. But whenever you're a leader, you should check on your back, you know, anybody backing you, you have to check. But I can't hear that Prime Minister is in Canada, I'm a Canadian, and I would not appear, we can't do that. He's so much in our hearts. And Prime Minister, thank you very much for all you have been doing, and God will back you up in Jesus' name.
Amen.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Please, um, don't, uh, project and back. Let's go, let's go, let's go.
That is it, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, um, that is our little interlude. Right now, we have to go straight to question and answer. And the question and answer is open to the floor. But first of all, um, notwithstanding that I'm the NC. Uh, based on little or the privileged information that they have, please one house. Based on the privileged information that I have. Uh, I want to open up the floor with one or two. It's not really a question, but certain information that needed our prime minister to clarify. And this has to do with, um, the issue of Amaka saga. And I know why I'm bringing it up, because at one time or the other, for the past few days, I've been following her on my program in TikTok. Very much at the background, watching and listening to what many people are talking in her platform. The question therefore is as follow, which will help her to actually understand what is going on. Literally, Amaka is someone I know that, yes, she's into social media, uh, something, but she's literally, um, she doesn't know anything that has to do with Biafra, Biafra agitation and the struggle. So, from one or two information I've been able to gather, with respect to, uh, the progress she has been hosting in her TikTok and all and so on and so forth. Please, here is the following question for clarification. Now, our prime minister to holistically and in detail as best as he could, to clarify the end. One, people were accusing the Biafra Republic government in exile. Able and all, and managed by our prime minister, Simon Eba, and they were saying that, uh, first of all, uh, they do not have any basic confidence in our prime minister and whatever that he's doing. On the ground that somehow that Dr. Nelly and Simon are ordered to an all part and parcel of autopilot that you will be moving. And today, before we could know it, um, that our prime minister fall out of, um, this thing with, uh, both in Sima and, um, Dr. Nelly. To the extent that some of the dirty activities was even in the internet. And therefore, how do we trust our prime minister, Simon Eba going forward? That if he is a leader, does it need to do such a thing to Dr. Nelly? And the question is, what exactly did our prime minister do to Dr. Nelly? What exactly did, you see man, did that they are bringing it in the fora for the TikTok of Amaka Handel? This were happening even yesterday till midnight, the before yesterday and so on and so forth. And she was confused and she felt like she needed clarification, unfortunately, she couldn't come in, whatever maybe the reason she was, she went out. In the distance, that history, historically, want to appear, to go into the history to give us to clarify the air, because they were using it to deceive Amaka. Secondly, they were saying that the OS was a structure that is owned and established by our own Ndu. And how dear our prime minister, Tony Nato say he is the leader of Biafra. But the truth is, our prime minister did not say he is a leader, so to say. He is the prime minister of the Biafra Republic government in exile. We still, he still honor and respect when you do, our supreme leader, and he is the spiritual soul. We need our prime minister to clarify this and how our own Ndu eventually beckon on him that he should take over the party, the Biafra should listen to him, and that he should follow him. And in his hand, and whatever that he do going forward, is under his authority and approval. But I try to make it clear, in that TikTok, that our own Ndu desire and request to seek for our prime minister's support, that he needs hundred men. He needs hundred men, the OS were dead, IPOB were dead. When our own Ndu was lamenting seriously that he needs hundred men, meaning even though he put the structure down, the OS. But yes, they were not to be trusted. And of course, um, our prime minister came into the fora at the most needed time that our own Ndu wanted somebody among all red men. And here come our prime minister, that he will be and represent fifty men, remaining other fifty men. Subsequently, interview followed between him and Ndu. And along the line, our own Ndu acknowledged and then baptized him and gave him the party and instructed us, the whole Biafra world, to listen to him. However, Amaka was confused because she did not understand at a point by which our own Ndu gave our prime minister the party and for us to listen and follow. Eventually, this led to envy and jealous among this those structure called the OS. And moving forward, they began to create a kind of hatred over our own Ndu, and that hatred led to his betrayal. And that betrayal led to where he is today, in DSA drop down. Yes, it is true, he established what a good US. Yes, it is true, something like he said came on board. But today, there was a lot of transformation that preceded that, because our own Ndu have already acknowledged and it's for the public that we should listen to Simon Eba and should follow him and go and flow along the team. And in between the line, we need clarification also from our prime minister to explain further. What happened? Because the likes of Amaka and so many other millions of Biafrans who tend not to understand. And these people are using propaganda that the OS cannot come into existence. And then somehow, we are now having the Biafra Republic government in exile, that it is a double standard.
There were, there were.
And so on and so forth, so please arrest my case there.
Thank you.
I know she's listening and she's somewhere there still and other people, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, Mazi Raff, can you take the two hands that we have?
Please, I have an update. Okay, um, Mazi Fanywaji from Canada has supported the PM's visit with one hundred a gemma. He has sent the receipt, which I have also forwarded to the, uh, Minister of, uh, uh. He has sent the receipt, which I have also forwarded to the uh Minister of uh Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Can you forward it to me too, please, so that we can uh put it in our accounting? Um, also, we, I have update here. One of our ladies here, um she did told me she's, she has an occasion. So she called me now and her name is Benedette Ojinaka. So she says she is going to use two hundred e G M to buy Osogi and uh Okwodi for our peer. She's from Ontario Province. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's take our honor Gladys, uh your hand is up, over your back, unmute yourself.
Okay, so I just want to add to the speech brother just make now that he said our Prime Minister should clarify about Sima and Nelly. So, if they are part of what Prime Minister have been since twenty nineteen till now. I don't think eh that our brother supposed to ask that question that our Prime Minister should explain. So, I did not accept that our Prime Minister to be bringing that issue again. That is gone. So because for Sima and then Nelly, they are not, we are not talking about the right now. We are supporting him for everything he have been doing up to date. We love him. If D O S want to be destroying a Prime Minister name, let continue. So they will get tired, the Afra will be restored. So that is what I just want to say.
Thank you, my sister.
Good students, very good students.
They found that people keep on dragging us to the back. They keep on asking us to go back.
Mr. Nena, thank you, thank you. Uh, just like after our Prime Minister's speech today. Whenever we get a, let's move forward, we're not going backward. We already have a government and we have a structured government. And our Prime Minister always come on S most of the time. There's some question that uh he will really be available to, you know, attend to or to attend to. Please, uh, we need fund, whatever we can do to support what we are doing. I'm not gonna be exempted, uh there will be pleasure, one thousand towards today, uh talk. Uh, so that here they make honor, I want an attacker and I take you. So and as long as what you are doing, you are convinced within you. Be happy, be glad, provide. We need, we need more hands, we need more support and as we are rounding up for the genuine freedom fighters that are here, please kindly, kindly, if you haven't su- uh support, kindly do that. And if you already did and yourself within you, ask yourself question. Is this the amount that you really want to use to get your freedom to liberate your people? We need logistic, we are not hiding our mouth. We are no longer agitating, uh this week I experienced something done in this. So, we are not worried who say create, that means dancing around Market Square Embassy with our flags no more. We are not dealing with government to government. So just our Prime Minister made it clear earlier, I P O B is an organization, indigenous people of Biafran. And we now have Biafran Republic Government in exile, government of the people, by the people, for the people. So please, we are not going backward, kindly support what we are doing as freedom fighters. And when you've, when you're on the war front to fight for your freedom, you don't fight with bare hand. You need logistic, you need to equip yourself. Yeah, a congressman call me a freedom fighter, not even by title, so all this title, it don't matter. As long as you are a freedom fighter, we all have the title of freedom fighting. It requires money, 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 ego, please, let's quickly get more hands, donate, be part of what we are doing as we are rounding up.
They will, thank you very much, uh, thank you. Yeah, uh one minute, Sonny, uh please let this be the last time we will come up here to insult our P M with this kind of uh, you tell and call it domanda. That it be the very last time anybody will come on our space to insult the P M with verify the air or go to this, this is the worst insult I would ever take, I can't take it. And next time I just had my bread, I couldn't explode. And uh my sister took that bread out and uh spoke. Let this be the very last time, such a demand or such a question for the P M to come. The Afra Public Government, that is um, then I ask for such senseless nonsense. Please let it be the very last time, I won't stand it anytime next time. Uh Mazie Sonny, please uh say something.
They will, uh my minister, you brought me to the spotlight, I didn't know why you brought me to the spotlight.
Uh, let take the spotlight and speak from where I just stopped now because I just got angry and I and go there Gladys to reduce that anger in me and I, but if I explode, maybe some women will like it.
All right, we have to continue, please, anybody that picks mic going forward, um, don't dwell on uh uh Nelly or Sima's issue. If you check the media team, we don't give preference to all those things.
How can you insult the P M where we are? There are, there are soldiers here, we even soldier, I'm a, I'm a Samanka soldier. Don't insult my P M with those kind of stupid questions, please.
So the media team don't open their platform to start talking about Nelly and Sima now. We don't make them relevant, so. And then we don't have time for others, so anyone picking the mic, don't take us backward on that place. And don't even bring it up because we don't have time for that. Um, if Amaka has any issue to clarify, you have the rep of your uh continents and locations, please, Amaka should get in touch there. We understand that she has not been part of what we've been doing. So she should ask the questions within our country there. And the rest will clarify her if she would know what she needs to know. Thank you so much as we continue, please. What happens on TikTok is what is happening on TikTok. So the government of Biafran don't go to TikTok to go and uh answer questions or to do TikTok show. TikTok is where people laugh therefore. And when it involves national. When, when it involves national issue of a citizen of Biafran, the government will speak up. Uh, we don't uh go about looking what TikToks are doing or what they are doing there. Thank you so much. We have two hands of.
Thank you, my boss. Thank you, my boss. We move, um academic kindness, please, anybody that raises hand and nobody to raise that issue here, I will just remove you.
Yeah, that's okay.
Uh, academic, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, I still remain his academic kindness. The most gorgeous academicah in the whole Europe. Um, I always support our Prime Minister. But before supporting him, I would push the receipt of the pledge I did before, but in order to support our sister Gladys, because I always support women. I will additionally add the whooping sum of fifty dollars because of her weight. Uh, thank you very much, I send currently the receipt to Minister Aparawa in a Jiffy, God bless you.
Thank you, academic kindness, thank you so much.
Um, just give me one minute, um please, I am calling on all Biafrans all over the world who are here to support us financially. This is a time for you to raise your hand up so that they can recognize you and you can help support our P M and our gallant men. Uh, we are rounding up to the end of this our program. Um, so we give about human minutes for people to raise their hands. And otherwise, uh our program will be closing by the remark of the Honorable Minister.
We have Mazie Peter, choose, okay Mazie choose, please, you have something to say. Go, American service, uh taking, taking some more, cheers. Um, uh, I just want to talk to Mister uh Finance Minister. Can he hear me, please?
Yes.
Yeah, welcome. Uh, 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 I just have, I just want to remind you of something. Um, uh, uh, I will like Biafran Republic to ban anything about this uh um local money uh bureau, like in the outside, but we go to land, all this and that. So I, I, I would do on this situation, we are Biafran, we believe other African orders, countries doing that kind of a business. But it's a black uh
Black market.
Black market, changing of dollars. So, and I'll be supporting that with fifty dollar.
Thank you. Please, I think, uh, I think I'm gonna find myself first because I mentioned dollar earlier, please, it's a gemma, one thousand e gemma. And Mazie, uh, really appreciate you. And Aggerigio have, have a fine to pay as well, so how much is your fine for mentioning dollar? It's a gemma, please.
A gemma, yeah, fifty, fifty a gemma.
Right, so you would have. Yeah, plus the fine.
Yeah, that's hundred.
Okay, thank you.
And here must have black market. Black market. Thank you, please, there's an update, update, somebody, Mazie Albat, Mazie Abad James just uh spent in one hundred fifty e gemma to support our sister Gladys Akocha for her wisdom and her spot on uh response. One hundred fifty e gemma to support Gladys, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Mazie, thank you.
All right, we have hands up, let's take them very quickly, uh Lily, please unmute yourself.
Hello, Biafrans. Um, Biko, um, I just want to make a suggestion. Um, all of us know the, the time we are in right now, it's very critical. And uh everything is just high. I want to plead that uh our P M, I want to know how the security is like. Please, you guys should make sure that he is secured very well, please. Let his security be tightened right now because things that are going on, honestly, I don't trust anybody around him. Please let his security be tightly secured. Thank you so much, this is the suggestion I want to give, thank you.
Thank you for your suggestion. Noted. All right, uh, uh, on you Frankie, please unmute yourself.
I can't deny that I make it in the Canada, one of them off, ma.
Thank you.
I said na, well, to bua, onya fo na anya, onoda nonante.
Um.
Uh huh. Eh? She nekenna ke, eh, kene de le, chukoku kabiama. Hmm? Kene mehe ni nona, gana anya, nanya, obato bi, omweje bua goke, wonylo wefias no de honko. Manaha e keta no ba, no de enko, eh, kene derege.
No.
I da ine na meji hundred dollar, na support, na support, konyenke, well, blani, okwa. Eh ha, oh, eh ha, demonstrated, the heart touching, ebemaa kwamiri keha ne me. Nsishineke, kene de lia, oh, goes in us, eh ha, ne me, we have more, they won.
Thank you, my sister, thank you.
They will, they will. They will, they will, thank you, thank you.
Let me, please, let's confirm, Amaka seem to be in inside, she told me.
Is she inside?
Yes.
Her name?
Yes, um, she's showing me what she coming with and.
Which name?
Um, with another iPhone. Okay.
Get name, get the name.
Okay, let me.
She already see her hand. Raise your hand if you're in the room, Amaka, if you have been able to come in again. The network was uh giving you challenge, if you are able to come back in, raise your hand. Okay, so maybe you came into with another name.
Amaka.
Is it iPhone two? There is iPhone two there, which I send the mic to open.
Okay.
iPhone two.
Amaka.
Is that iPhone two?
Yeah. If you are using the, eh, can you tell me the name on your phone, she just.
If that is iPhone two, you cannot mute because we have, we have given you the mic already.
I think she's in the, the other side. Um. Yeah, she, let, let me see. Amaka, sorry, raise your hand so we can, we have over almost two hundred people here, so it's difficult to locate people, if you can raise your hand.
You can go to the comment section, type the name, what name is she?
Uh huh. She, she screenshots something and showed me.
Okay. Send it to me, let me forward it to uh the media team, please forward it to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
If it's iPhone, let me, let, let's go through the iPhones here. Uh iPhones, unmute yourself, iPhone. iPhone, unmute yourself. iPhone, if you know you are there, Amaka, just unmute yourself.
Okay, let's take the hand off. Let's take the hand, while we wait for her.
Yeah, we wait for her, let's take the hands, okay, Mazie, okay, please unmute yourself.
No, good evening, good, good morning.
Do you need your camera on so we can make you go on your camera?
Uh, it's okay, I understand.
Okay, if you're okay like that, go ahead, no problem.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay. So, good evening, good evening, good evening, Red Bear France, and good evening, Canada, or good morning, whichever one it is. Um, not, not wasting more time, I, I just want to make um a remark for the Canadians. I think you people should be coming up with a fine. I've been waiting, watching, you broke your cola nut and ate it alone. You forgot that in this age, eh, Jerry Fena, tapa cola. So no cola nut for us, so you will be coming up with a fine uh to the government. So I'm making this report with uh a gemma, some of uh fifty e gemma uh to bring Canada to the people's courts. Thank you. You want aggressive court, great, great, you people did well.
Mazie, okay, eh, I have announced several time that everybody know here, continent, everybody should please come up. I did that announcements, twice or three times.
I will, you, you know, find the sweet, you know, you say I the face, nah, you just. You are, you, you are this fine, you are this fine, grace, grace.
Mazie, okay, eh, eh, Maragi, so you are, the fine is back to you now, yeah, was it double?
No, no.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. We're able to locate Amaka yet, uh so we can move to the next program.
Yeah, if we look, Mazie Sonny, if you locate her, fine, otherwise she should raise, raise her hand so that we'll find her. Uh, Adandembenande, your hand is up.
Yes, so, van, van, van. Just I told you this mobile opportunity, I was in the, omundi bo, ozi muibo. Ibo monose moza, Adandembenande, get a napo, ni nesi. On thirteenth of October, na biya no, otun okaze no no. On thirteen of October, na, bi, no, oto, no, case, no, no, omundi bo. Na, na, ba, ta, za, ba, ta, obato, bi, eh, eh, na, sa, ya, bi, eh. Omun, ne, chole, fe, eh, so thirteen of, of October, eh, fo, omu, ibo, ni, ne, ibo, zuzu, we, zuzu, we, eh, boss, a, go, no, no. Thirteen of October, oto, no, case, no, no, omundi bo, omu, fe, na, na, ba, ta, obato, bi, eh. Oh, ne, bi, eh, na, na, ta, eh, di, ma, la, ndi, eh, ta, eh, di, ma, la, ndi, bo. So, eh, I can, I will, more opportunity, eh, will, eh, go, no, see, wa, da, no, no, ba, za, eh, eh, de, bo. Eh, no, ma, no, we, eh, may, eh, na, ka, eh, na, fe, eh, so, we, bo, ni, ne. Eh, boss, a, go, no, 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 wa, ni, ne, bi, eh, no, sa, la, eh, na, ba, ta, ba, ta, bi, eh. Za, ba, ta, no, bi, if, eh, ni, ne, kula, ta, so, no, na, wa, da, no, ba, za, thirteen of Oc- October.
Thank you.
Deu.
Deu, Adandembe, Nande, get it. Eh, what's name is this, fixed? Okay, let's see what you want to fix, unmute yourself.
Um, I, I just raised my hand up right now.
Yeah, who's that?
Oh, yeah, it's me, Samaka.
Ah, ah, the name fixed, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to, because you, you called me, let me hang up.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Mama, we are waiting for you.
Open your camera.
Okay, okay, hold on one second. Hold on one second, I'm just gonna try and do it, because, eh.
You were able to do it the last time before we, we stopped seeing you.
Okay, okay, eh, yeah, hold on.
Do the exact thing you did the last time.
Uh huh.
Touch that camera.
Okay. How about this now?
All right, we have you now, eh, let's see. We, we have been looking forward to have you, you had the, the celebrity for now. All right, dear France, behold, the Amaka, Amaka, ne, will. Okay.
Okay, Amaka, the Prime Minister was here.
Uh, PM is here, Nande, oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amaka, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Eh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I wanted to, I wanted to hear, you know, hear from her for the very first time. And like I said, I have not spoken with her before, before now, so. Uh, I'm not, I don't think you are going to tell a lot of stories because, eh, you know, uh, something is still going on. So, but just that, eh, you know, briefly, share to Bia France, eh, you know, your experience, but I like, I, I showed you. Uh, through the Foreign Affairs Ministry of Biafra Republic, uh, we will be here for you till the end. You are not alone, and, eh, that's what this Biafra government stand for, whether you support this government or not. Who will use you to set example to the Nigeria state, that the bully against Bia France is over. Anywhere in the world, you bully any bo man, who will come for, for the person, so. Uh, who will use you to set example, and it is gonna happen for every other person, not just you. But that the bullying and the ethnic hatred against the one Biafra people, the government has taken it up. And this will be the beginning of the end. So, the Bia France, there has been a lot of propaganda against you on social media. And, eh, eh, as a lady you are, I know you have gone through a lot. And, eh, so, um, the, eh, internal thing, eh, will not be discussed public. Uh, the government will, eh, support you, both your legal representative and then also. Uh, making sure that we provide witnesses if need be, I believe that has been briefed. But we are not gonna discuss a issue of the, you know, what is in the court or whatever that is going on at this point, but just know that, eh. You are not going to be alone, and you will never be alone, who will use you to set example to Nigeria state. Nigeria is a defeated, eth- ethnic, bigotry country, terrorist country. That, eh, all they do is to bully those who they call citizens and kill them. We've seen them kill pro- protesters, those carrying their own flag, not Biafra, they kill them in the street. They shoot them dead, they have no regard to human li- life, they have no regard to women, they have no regard to children. And that is exactly what we are doing to provide alternative for Biafra people to have the right to live. And the right to aspire to be whatever they want to be in life. And that's why we are doing what we are doing here, a lot of people will not understand the job we are doing until Nigeria begin. To bully them, like they have bullied you, before you, then you know that, eh, indeed, actually, there is a hope. And only that when you discover there is a hope, you will continue to hope hopelessly on Nigeria, Nigeria is a failed state. And every Biafran, including those who are running for political positions in Nigeria, don't know that. Their life are like this until it will happen to them, and many people will not have the opportunity. And before you, you say something, let me also share a story with you. I have been watching different thing on social media, how people contacted you and were using your, recorded your voice, your telephone conversation with them. And they were using it to do program, you know, the, um, IPOB Nigeria have attacked me since two thousand twenty one. They have blackmailed me, called me Nigeria agent, I listened to the one who said that I'm a Fulani agent, and I was listening to hear him. Eh, give you the proof, because he said, eh, he has a proof, you know, so I was listening to see the kind of proof he wanted to give to you, but of course, that never happened, so. They call me Nigeria agent, they call me Zou agent, they call me Fulani person, and all manner of names. In order to demoralize me and of course, in order to continue to do what, eh, what are called the political pressure group. Which, what they were doing instead of fighting for Biafra, so anyway, there was this man who, eh, was fighting for Russia. A Biafra, who was fighting for Russia and was fighting against Ukraine. He made a video, several video, and, eh, and, eh, pictures, where he has a Biafra badge. And as a Prime Minister of Biafra, I, whenever I see anybody identifying him or herself with a Biafra flag. Like I've just said for you, for example, even if you don't support this government, it doesn't matter, we want to use you, and every other person, not just about you. So, when I see anybody who is proudly identifying him or herself with a Biafra flag, I will be proud of that person. So, I saw this guy, he made a video and had a B- Biafra badge, fighting for Russia. And I posted this video or picture without making any comment because I don't know who he is. Now, immediately I made a post, they approached this guy, the people that were calling you. You know, and I must say that you are very, very lucky, because what I wanted you to do, what I wanted you to do is to go against the gods of our land. So, this guy, exactly what they did to you, or exactly what they did to this guy, is what I wanted to do to you. But you are very, very lucky, you did not fall, you know, your, 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 your hands are clean. So, this guy, you know, they approached him to make a video and condemn me. And he made the video, just the way they wanted you to do. So, he made a video and before you know it, bam, the video was on social media, going viral. Oh, Simon Epa, eh, don't post my picture, I am disappointed, you know, like, he's not attacking me for no reason. I don't know whatever you are doing, and I don't believe in whatever you are doing, you know, what I asked him to do, so after doing that. I said, okay, no problem, you know, I have not done anything wrong by being proud of you for posting. A video or picture where you have a Bia- Biafra flag and fighting for Russia. Of course, the god of the land removed the protection they used to guide him in Russia, eh, in Russia war. And the next day or so, he got killed. Yeah, he got killed. And of course, they tried to hide it, the brother started posting on social media. You know, giving the, eh, eh, e- e- eulogy to him and all that, so we challenged them, since they asked this guy to make a video. He went and make a video, and the Biafra land and the Biafra spirit that were protecting him, left him immediately, and he got neutralized. Till today, they even went and tried to bring somebody else who dressed like him and cover his face. To claim that the guy is still there, but till today, the guy is dead, completely dead, because the brother actually confirmed that. So, wh- why I share this story is that, eh, this is gonna be, i- 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 it is good that you did not fall for them. Eh, but like I said, I have not spoken with you before, what I did is that, eh, I directed the, eh. The relevant department of the Biafra government in exile, which is the Foreign Affairs Ministry of the Biafra. To swing into action and make sure that we protect you as a government. The main primary purpose of a government is to fight for its citizens. And even though we are in exile, and of course, we are also in, in the homeland, the defunct government, which a lot of people don't actually know. It is a prerequisite requirement that is required of any government is that. You must be able to provide security of life and property of the people, we have done that in Biafra land. And we, it is, it is not only in Biafra land, we are also doing it globally, and your own is in the public. And is going viral because of the nature of the case, we are, we have, eh, helped a lot of Biafrans. That have had different problems in different parts of the world, but your own is a little bit peculiar because of the nature. And it has this ethnic hatred, which Nigeria state are the one engineering, you, you can imagine. In your own case, the entire Nigeria, eh, National Assembly, within twenty four hours, rode to Canada. These are people, and the worst part of it is that there are people who are from Biafra land, which we have given vote of no confidence because. They had doesn't represent the people that voted them, or the people that they claim they are representing in Abuja. What they did was to join the Fulani caliphate to condemn their own. And we listened to the fact that the idiot from Abia State, who is the speaker, or deputy speaker, whatever he is. Was part of those who rode to Canada to deal with you as an Igbo woman. P two B, which you supported very much in two thousand twenty three election, also condemned you. It was when I was watching, because I don't like to delve into issues. Eh, eh, without having some background of what is trying, happening, so when I have watched and listened to P two B and all of them condemning you. I said, no, that Biafra is for everybody who is answered Biafra name. And it is time we use you to set example, especially now that they have come for you, the Nigeria you supported so much. Just like every one of us di- did in the past, I was one of the bigger, I said, anybody, if I can fight for Biafra. Every other person that is shouting Nigeria today is just open kupu, because I suffered for Nigeria. Fight for Nigeria, did a lot for Nigeria, so if I can turn around, when I see that there is no way. Under Nigeria, I believe that it is just a matter of time, everybody will turn their back, so we decided to come to help you. And that's why P two B, after our first tweet about you, P two B changed. And withdraw the statement and begin to talk something different, but that's who we are. The same P two B, we have also made very clear to Nigeria state that any day they arrest him, because we know they are planning to arrest him. Any day they arrest him, we will increase the resistance that we are giving them today, time straight. P two B is not part of what we are doing, but just the same hands of fellowship. And the same open door, we have for you, the same thing we have for P two B, irrespective of what he has done to us. Even if we are going to do anything, or if really anything is going to happen to P two B, it must not be Nigeria. We will never allow them to do anything to P two B. And when I said this, a lot of idiots who don't know actually, who are not actually liking P two B, but they are on the social media. Trying to hide under him, they will say, oh, don't talk about P two B, don't talk about, as if if anything happened to P two B, they're gonna stand for him. All of them would disappear, but that is not what we are here for, so Amaka, you're welcome, eh, I can see that you are having difficulty. Joining Zoom, maybe you are not very confident with the Zoom thing, so, but, eh, you are gonna learn it, you are gonna learn it, so. Just give us a brief of what after that transpired, don't tell us the whole story, and don't tell us about your personal thing. Don't tell us about, you know, you know, some of the things that I'm aware of, don't tell us that, just tell us you are fine, and this is you, and we go from there, thank you. Unmute yourself, please.
Excuse me, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so, I thank you so much for your support. And, eh, I, I thank, eh, Mister Charles and, eh, Sister Nena, they've been so supportive. I am so grateful, to be honest, because I, I didn't, I, I didn't know them before, and they started calling me, reaching out to me. Even yesterday, she, I wasn't feeling very good, and she called, I called her. That I was not feeling good, and she wa- she talked to me like a mother. She told me what to do, you know, to go get some lemon and some, some, eh, honey and mix it up and, and, eh, you know. Soak it up for, on my body, which I did, and I was very okay. Um, I really thank her for her support, she's so nice, very calm, but sometimes she gets angry. But that's normal, we all human, okay, so. You know, um, to be honest, what, whatever that happened, um, I didn't expect it to blow out of proportion because. You know, it was just like a response that I gave to somebody who actually bullied me for being Igbo. And who called me, eh, some, s- slandered my name. And the names of the Igbo's as a whole, and, eh, wanted to change my history. At some point, I was thinking if actually my history, that my, the, my parents told me was right. Because, um, you see some other tribes, eh, you know, on the, on social media, telling you about, um, your history. That you, that Igbo's are, are slaves and things like that, which is highly, eh, unacceptable. I see a lot of people agree to that and say, oh, maybe it's true, but I'm not gullible, because I'm not gonna accept whatever someone. Says about me or my history or my people, you know, um, yeah, I think that, that, the, the federal government. Blew it out of proportion because it was a response from, eh, from, I don't wanna mention their names. Because I was asked fr- from the authority not to mention the names of these people, at this point, until the case is over. Yeah, so, um, they made it like that, and I don't know why, but at this point, I started to realize because of my tribe. That's why it, it went, it went, eh, overboard. Um, yeah, so like you said, you said I shouldn't touch every base, but I'm just hoping that everything will be okay, but. With you guys standing beside me, I'm very confident, and I really appreciate everyone. And, eh, at this point, I have started to use my voice to, you know, to bring the Igbo's together, because I mean. I'm, 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 I wouldn't say that I, I love Igbo's so much, but, you know, I do love Igbo's too much, that's the truth. You know, but sometimes when I say this, people be like, oh, you always feel like you're the only Igbo, no, I have this passion. You know, I didn't know the video was gonna go viral, because you hear when I say that Igbo men are too quiet and things like that, you know, that's how I feel, that Igbo should speak up. We should, our voice, our, our voice, our phone, and everything is our weapon, and we have to use it, your pen, your paper is your weapon. Your computer is your weapon, so you have to use it wisely, you know, so, yeah. So, recently, I have been talking about, um, you know, eh, bringing the Igbo's together, because, eh, when I, when this thing happened, I, I realized that. A lot of we, eh, the Igbo's, we, there's a little bit of, you know, yeah, so I'm trying to bring people together. And, you know, listen to everybody's complaint, and, um, you know, um, you know, talk to a lot of people. Yeah, so I think everything is moving on well in my platform right now, eh, because we are all working as one. You know, yeah, so that is what I'm doing right now, and, um, yes, I'm really thankful, I don't wanna touch every base. I'm really thankful for the community, and I say, um, chukuku, gosie, everybody, thank you so much.
Deu. Well, thank you, thank you very much, Amaka. Now you know you have a government, Biafra Republic, government, government that take care of its people. So you just heard what our Prime Minister said, thank you, he's on the phone, okay, PM, deu.
All right, eh, thank you very much, so, um, Amaka, you, you know, I know that you've gone through a lot, like I said, um. You don't have to worry about this whole thing, you did the right thing, it is, eh, as a result of the bully. And, eh. And, uh, and I just know that you are not alone. So those worries of, uh, panicking and all that should not continue again from this moment. So you are not alone. You have us and we have you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
There were, thank you, thank you.
This something is applicable to everybody, everybody, every Biafrans all over the world. It is time Nigeria, we are going to teach Nigeria lesson. I came to this Biafra struggle with Iwe and Onomah to deal with Nigeria for what they have done to my people for decades. And I'm on a revenge mission. If anybody is thinking that I'm going to change or that I'm going to slow down of, it is, I have not even started. Nigeria need to be bombarded with atomic bomb. If I have access to it, I will bomb them. Because that is exactly what they deserve. It's a, it's a country that doesn't suppose, that is not supposed to be part of Committee of Nation. Let nobody deceive you into thinking that, we know that of course, you know, there are some kind of things you will say and it is not good. But remember that something made you to say it. And like I said, we will provide evidences of what pushed you. We are going to bring witnesses to support you any day, anytime, till we see the end of whatever Nigeria have planned against you. So that's exactly what you should know, that you are not alone. We are not, uh, we are not a group, we are not a group. This is a Biafra government and I believe that you have come to know that indeed Nigeria is not for you, just like every other person. Every one of us, we are one with Nigeria. In fact, in two thousand and nineteen, I was in the forefront of campaign for P T O B and Article. I was one of the leader of the Pita Obi Article Campaign Group in Europe. I was one of the leader. So before then, I have represented Nigeria for many years. So many of us, we know we have done one of two things for Nigeria, believe in Nigeria, but of course, as we can see, the whole thing have turned to become something else. We did not know when Nigeria become an Islamic state. It was supposed to be a secular state. They restructured it through the constitution from the back door. And they are pushing it, pushing it, pushing it. Today, they are full Islamic state. We have Muslim Muslim ticket. And Muslim president, Muslim vice president, everything is Muslim. Before you know it, their plan is to kill everybody and we resisted them, we are resisting them. So today, at least, they have called everywhere, European Union, Finland. And everybody knows Nigeria because we have exposed them to the world. And now they are calling international community. I do not know who is international community. They are calling the ICC. We are also in the ICC, we have written to them, we have over five hundred pages of evidences. We have compiled a very brief summary of thirty-seven pages of, of, uh, uh, human rights violation against Biafra people. So we are waiting for them. So the same way they are using this threat terrorism to subjugate us and force us with the guns and barrels of the gun to one Nigeria is the same way we are going to use those things to resist them. If they come with gun, we resist them with gun. If they come with bomb, we resist them with bomb. If they come with propaganda, we also resist them with propaganda. So it is teeth to teeth, iron to iron. Until the day we are going to be recognized as an independent state and that is the process we are into now. So we are fighting using a multi-dimensional approach that never happened in the history of Biafra struggle. That's exactly where we, and that's why we're making progress today. Our military, Biafra Liberation Army, Resistant Fighters are doing a very good job. That is the reason you are not seeing terrorist attack in Biafra land. Otherwise, the way they hate us by now, Benue, Benue would be, would be child play because they can never hate Benue state more than they hate us. We'll look at what they are doing there, you know. So if they had their chance, they will wipe us away within a trickle of an hour. But here we are with Iwe to defend our land, our women and children. Nigeria will never have peace. They will never sleep until Biafra become an independent state. Thank you very much, Amaka.
Thank you.
And tomorrow, let them, let them call our celebrity, Amaka. It is, uh, in this for, it makes, and then you, the Eurobar upon jazz. Sharing it, look, look, we told you, we told you, Samanepa, she's listening to Samanepa. It's Samanepa that is teaching her to poison people. Look at, look at, she's there because they say, I'm the mentor, you know. I accept the mentor and that's why I would defend any Biafra. Every Biafra who knows something must stand and defend yourself. If they come with, I, they come with machete, carry machete. If they come with bomb, carry bomb. If they come with AK four seven, carry AK four seven. We don't hide anything anymore. So nobody should come and threaten you and then you expect you to cool down. You want to be a civilized person. We don't do that anymore. Fire for fire. They have done, they have dealt with us for many years and you say enough is enough. Today they are crying. You can imagine the Nigeria terrorist army writing to Amnesty International. They forgot when they were killing Biafrans in the, in port. They forgot when they were killing Biafrans in Masingam, the Kano's house. They forgot when they were bombarding people in the Abba, in Abba school. Today, they are calling Amnesty International, the same Amnesty International they condemn for reporting the killing of Biafra people. They say, yeah, Amnesty, come on, Samanepa is, uh, is savagery, you know, Samanepa savagery. They have not seen savagery. The reason we released that Eurobar soldier is to send them a message and that message is, is working. They have fallen into the trap. And let me tell you, other ones will not be lucky as him. They knows that very well.
Yes. I just want to use just one minute to appreciate Amaka being here. I have been following Amaka, or the case Amaka put at first on the twenty-ninth of August. By twenty-ninth, by party, I spoke with her, thirty-one, first of September was on Sunday. Something happened, we all felt bad. Amaka, please be aware that nothing I did, that I did by myself. It was his, our prime minister's order. I call it order, O R D E R. And that order came from up to the director of Exeter Avera Minister. I wish we can spotlight our sister, Dr. Irobi. So from whatever Dr. Irobi told me is what I did. And then because Charles is right there in your province, I also sent delegated him. So this is how the delegation.
Joy, you can open your camera if you are free.
Director of Exeter Affairs to me, the rep, and then to Charles. And I want to assure you here, I have already told PM, PM have instructed me, I have raised a committee of five-man committee, men and women, who will be physically present on, in the court on the day that your case will come up, unless it is by Zoom, because most of the cases they do it by Zoom. If it is physical, you will see your brothers and sisters sitting there, raising thump up, helping, supporting you. And among those five men, three are willing to be your witness, life witness. So we are here to support you. Yesterday, when I spoke to you, you say you are having pain. I said, that pain will clear. I told you what to do, when you want, I said, please do it. So I thank you and I bless.
Thank you, PM.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. We move. Thank you, uh, PM. Thank you, Amaka, for coming. Bless you, bless you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, um, Mommy Nena, where are we at in your program?
It is still me and the opportunity. We're almost done and, um, we were just lacking on that question and answer and, um, we thank, uh, Ma, Amaka, for being here. We thank everybody for the patience. And I know my question triggered her immediate presence once again. So in this case, uh, I know why I'm saying this and I know that tomorrow everything is gonna go agog. Having said that, uh, what we are still having now is, um, a kind of coming into closer. Remember before then. Yeah, I want some, I want the, some financial support, like I said, continental reps are here and other individuals also here for, uh, you know, to support us from this project and, and, thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think that, uh, this last, uh, meet, uh, section have triggered a lot of hands. I don't know if you know, you want to say something or we should go.
We are, we are on support. So that's a question and answer, we, I think that we already, uh, covered that. Yeah, yeah, we need to, uh, call his hand, hand for support. We are financial.
Individuals that are also here in the public, that is what we have in the agenda right now. Then, uh, as much support as we can financially. So they might, on the floor, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Academic kindness, please, uh, please, as you take the mic, just know that you have one minute. So that we'll be able to attend to all the hands because as your hands are going down, more hands are coming up. So please, please strictly one minute.
Sonny, Sonny, are you seeing, uh, are you seeing that I'm live? Because I can't see live on my X. So, did you, did you see that I'm live?
Yes, I'm seeing it, I'm seeing it.
Really?
Yes.
I'm not seeing that.
It's, it's Twitter. Me and myself, if I check my page, I can't see that I'm live until I have to scroll to go and look for the broadcast.
PM is no longer live, oh.
Scroll and look for it, you will see it is live.
No, it's not there. PM is not live, Sonny.
I said scroll and look for the broadcast, you will see it. It's Twitter that is going there.
Is there a person there that is seeing that I'm live on Twitter?
Yeah, you are not live. PM is not live.
So what is, uh, you know, because I checked and it is not showing that I'm live, so. So he said that he's seen that I'm live, but I can't see that. But I see that Sonny is live.
Wait, I will send you a screenshot.
Okay.
Okay, wait, I think the program is hidden somewhere. Let me see.
The program is still live, but Twitter is lacking, uh, some things.
Yeah.
Okay, it is, yeah, PM is still live, but it's not on his page. Yeah, I don't know, I just saw it now. You are still live. I can listen to myself. I'm talking there.
But not on my page.
Uh, you are live, but it's not on your page.
On the page of people that shared it, right?
Yes, yes, because.
Abato be asking me no life, almost fifteen thousand on our page. Uh, fifteen thousand nine hundred now watching. That is too much.
I'm not seeing it.
I don't share it again.
I, I see it now from the official government page, but not on my page.
Wow.
On what you. Fifteen thousand, but I can't see it on my page. It's not live on my, I'm not live on my own page.
If, if, if Madonna Amaro Bona, our PM will be boom, will be, oh, will be bene, yeah. Even I, when I wind on a media and I bow, I can confess and I can attest to that. Let us zoom nine of fundraising like this and then we, like on my own side, maybe I have like five hundred people watching. Once PM begins to speak, before you know it, from five hundred, they now have one thousand people watching. Our Obato be a jaga and I, I always admire that.
Over sixteen K watching, so it's still live. I sent you the screenshot. Can see it.
Yeah, 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 I see it now, but not on my page.
It's not on the PM's page, yeah. All right, we move. Uh, Marz, uh, academic kindness, please, let's take the mic, please make it as quick as possible. Sixty seconds so I would, uh, make it up quickly. Amute yourself, Marz. This academic kindness, are you there? Okay, he's not taking, grabbing the mic. Uh, please, Onyekachi, Onyekachi is back. Okay, Katya, unmute yourself.
Yes, uh, good evening once again. Uh, the, uh, the name is Onyekachi Obi Docha, Johannes. Um, yes, uh, thank you for this, this, uh, short space that allowed me to, to speak. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to, to, um, to reach out directly to, to Amaka. Um, it's nice hearing you live and in real time too. Um, I, I would confess, I was one of the people who had, um, uh, my doubts as to who you were. Okay, because there was this conspiracy theory, you know, that was making the rounds as to who you were, as to your ethnicity and whose side you were really on. And you, you, you may not blame a lot of us. Because, um, these parts that have been going on, okay, in these life platforms regarding the Bini and this and that. Some of us discovered that most of those people were not of Bini ethnicity and many were not of Igbo ethnicity. Okay, that was the reason for our doubts because we found that, that very many of them were of the southwest. Paid by the Igbo APC government to cause rifts, okay, directed that, especially us, the Igbo. Because of their loss, okay, in the polls. But the, the thing, as it so panned out, I do share, um, that I don't understand your side. Because the emotions got to a head, okay, and you had to say what you said. Okay, but unknown to you, most of those people who were pushing all that hatred were paid agents of the government, that I wish I had more than enough time to elaborate on this issue. Because there's something ongoing by these people which they intend to unleash against us, but we know they have failed. Okay, because already Nigeria has failed. These people are sinking in the waters and they just want to take everybody down with them, but they have failed already. Now, um, okay, so now, uh, what, uh, we wanted to clarify, you know, the questions we had were as to if you were Igbo and, uh, what was this thing regarding, um, the, uh, his name? Okay, probably you were of, uh, half Ed Igbo parentage and this and that and blah, blah, blah. And probably some, some, uh, intonations in your speech, you know, from that audio that made the round. You know, that was the reason why a lot of us had doubts. But, uh, nonetheless, we, uh, we could well ascertain that you were on your own and and the government had nothing to do with it, although we, we do see what these people were up to. Where within twenty-four hours, they had written a letter to Canada, within twenty-four hours, uh, PKW had come out saying all sorts of nonsense and there were people out there of her own ethnicity who had said worse things. The brother to Adinka grandson, or the rather, Adinka grandiose, did make a comment on a life that he would impose the Obobini to Kalaba like the British did and rape his wives and nobody has said anything. People have said even worse to us, that I, that I was raised, that I was born and raised and they go, we have seen worse. They are even still saying things to our faces. But, so there just had to be a time that someone had to stand up to them and give back to them the things that they had been saying. So nonetheless, I felt it was a bit, yeah.
Thank you very much. I think you have made a point. We need to go on the space and trash it even more. So let us, uh, go ahead with this, uh, our convo. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you so much. Maybe when you come, we'll come on space, you can join us on space and then we'll trash it out. Thank you. All right, we'll move. Please, um, who else is there? Uh, Unis, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, to make it fast now, I just want to say a big thank you to our Prime Minister, Marz Simon Ema, His Excellency. Uh the Peace Ambassador himself. Thank you very much for all you do and what you have been, you know, doing and what you have to do so much. I don't know what to say. But I so much, I and my family, we love you to the moon and back. We stand with you for life. To Simon Ema for life. Yes, thank you also, our sister Amaka, Amaka, for being so brave. To come to this platform and over sixteen thousand, more than sixteen thousand people were watching you. And I know some people have hid in shame. They've hid their faces in shame because they they.
Sixteen thousand only on the PM that are over. How more than that, more than that, watching every other platform, even.
Exactly, I thought. I thought Patavam, I've had over three hundred, there about more than that.
I have watched over five hundred on Twitter.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, Chineke made me better.
That should be up to hundred thousand people watching this program.
Exactly, exactly. I'm I I I'm so overwhelmed. Thank you, Amaka, for being so brave. After they must have bombarded you on your on your platform, you did not, we were, you did not shake, you still found it. Uh you know, you did it right and fit to come and honor our Prime Minister. Thank you. Thank you for being brave. And I say shame, shame to those who came after you out of their own, you know, selfishness. And their self, their 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 hatred for our Prime Minister, who has nothing but love for the people of Biafra. I say shame unto them. May God punish them for being so evil and wicked. Then we reap what they have sown and evil is what they will reap. I need to follow them and their unborn children. I said their unborn children repent. If you follow them. Thank you so much. I have an elder sister. May God rest his uh rest her soul, uh excuse me, um. She, her name is Amaka and she is so dear to my family. And immediately I saw you, your your picture, you reminded me of her. Thank you for for not putting us to shame, for coming to this platform. And at this juncture, I want to cut it uh short and support your bravery. With uh some of uh to add to what I have done before, to add uh fifty dollars to that. Thank you very much and may God bless you. Keep staying strong. We love you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please, um let's try to utilize one minute and some seconds because uh we have a lot of hands, so please. The next speaker, please try to stay within one minute and some seconds. Thank you so much.
Yeah, very, very correct. Uh please, uh Mighty Dog, unmute yourself.
Hey Pastor Vam, greetings. Yeah, how about one more? Um greetings, um my uh Prime Minister, I'm Finance Minister, all the ministers, and I'm your friend in general. And I thank you, Canada, for hosting the Prime Minister. Yeah, I want to, like as always, honor that seat with a hundred a gemma. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mighty Dog.
Thank you, Mighty Dog. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh unmute yourself, uh Young Onukufu, unmute yourself, Young Onukufu.
Uh uh I greet the house. My Prime Minister. Uh Pastor Van 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 Man, so all the ministers, I greet you people for your uh well-done job. Um be uh because of this, our sister Amaka, uh I say let me support with the fifty dollar. Uh my sister Amaka, you did very well.
A gemma?
Yeah, fifty a gemma. Thank you.
Thank you, Young. Thank you so much, Young.
Thank you, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Young.
All right, Odogu Na Isu, unmute yourself. Odogu Na Isu, unmute yourself. Okay, you are not able to do that now. We give the microphone to our beloved Gladys Akaucha. Oh, we are back. Oh, we are back. Unmute yourself.
Uh I just want to thank our Prime Minister. Me, I'm a very shy person, so Prime Minister, God will bless you.
Bless you too, devil.
I don't, I don't know how to express myself. You are giving me hope of Biafra coming. I'm so happy to to see you anytime you are talking. I'm always sitting in the living room watching you. My kids will be asking me, mommy, why do you always sit on the pile? Even though I'm cook, I said, this is the man that Marz said we should follow. There was a time when uh they said, Prime Minister, your mat is burning. When you was talking, you was telling them, no, your mat, your mat is not burning. I took anointing all year. I put it in my hand, I was praying. I put it on the telly, my hand on the telly. So and God spoke to me, you are the right person. Because that time my husband don't want to be part of what we are doing. And I told my husband, I said, as far as Holy Spirit lay it in my heart, Prime Minister is the right person. I said, then people that is talking rubbish in ninety social media about our Prime Minister. I said, you have to join this struggle, my husband. I said, so we have to, if you don't join this struggle, I say you will be a sabotador. That is how my husband joined this struggle. So I'm so happy, Prime Minister. God will continue to strengthen you. God will bless you, bless your family. Anything you lay your hand will prosper for you. Anybody that want to bring you down, that person will go down in the mighty name of Jesus. Because the grace you carry, people don't see that grace. But if you have a spiritual eye, you will know that you have a grace.
Yes.
That grace, people don't see it. Anytime I pray for you, God show me who you are. You are a great man. So we have to support our Prime Minister so that whatever he is planning, we accomplish it. All of us will be rejoicing because I saw when they released our leader. I see a lot of white people, they carry our leader. I was telling my leader, oh, please, just let me kiss your leg. Marz said, no, he don't want that. He said, he don't want that for me to kiss his leg. That is what Holy Spirit revealed to me that time. Biafra will come. People are doubting, Biafra is coming. Biafra is coming. So we have to support this great mission so that God will bless every one of us. And God will bless those who are not supporting so that they can have mind to support in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. He said, he said, he said.
Please, we have, we have hands and we need a gemma, a gemma, a gemma.
Okay, uh that was powerful. All right, we go and unmute. Okay, Odogu is not able to unmute yet. If I agree, please unmute.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead.
All right, um thank you so much for um letting me into this uh audience today. Uh this is a very first time I'm seeing some of the faces, but there's something I would like to say just quite briefly. Um I have to establish the fact that I'm not a fan of um Mr. Simon Ema. I'm not his fan, but there's something I want to tell some, some, some people who are going to actually be in this um uh audience today. One thing is how do you assess that someone is actually doing the right thing? I'm not, when I said I'm not his, I'm not his fan, I mean, some of the things he does, some of the way he does things, I really, I'm not really a fan of it. But I must tell you that uh looking at both the psychological, the philosophical orientation of uh. Of of what he does and me assessing it according to my own parameters, I would actually tell you that um. He has the best interests of this struggle at heart. And now, the reason why I'm saying that is because I'm a keen observer of what happened from the beginning of the struggle. I knew him when he was on Facebook. He used to do some broadcasts. I also knew him when he does this fundraising where uh Mr. Nam the Cano used to join. I I I monitored it at that time because obviously I was working for a Nigerian television station, so we monitor whatever they do at that time. So and uh I I watched it from the beginning and how it started, how gradually, you know, he was questioning how, what, I I I'm sorry, taking people back, taking everybody back, but.
Just make it, make it, make it brief, as briefly as you can, because there are a lot of hands, so just one minute, one minute.
Okay, so how come this happened to the leader or to this and that and the question and everything culminated to what uh we have today? But there's one advice I want to, I have for him. That advice I have for him. Is that. He should be very, very careful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You just have advice. You're not supporting what is.
Yeah, uh I think PM Charlie C, I want to say something.
I represent Nigeria here, so I am acting very careful from today on.
Okay, you are representing Nigeria, uh okay.
I think you should be more careful for even coming to join here with your face. Because I see your picture, except if that's not your picture. You know, you can threaten us and go free, right? You should. You are in Nigeria, I am more on ground than you. You know that, right?
So we're advising you to be very careful.
You now to start running, except if this is not your picture. Just start running. Thank you.
Prime Minister, yeah.
Marzira. Yeah, uh our Prime Minister, thank you, thank you very much uh for the advice you just advising. And our Prime Minister here, you're looking at. I'm one of his disciple. Who this idiotic human being that just showed yourself here, you should disappear. You should be ashamed of yourself. And you well know that he's doing the right thing and you are here to disgrace yourself. Let Nigeria happen to you and your entire family. And we all here say amen. Nigeria will happen to you.
Nigeria will happen to you.
This. All of you that are during our Prime Minister, Chineke are only local. They all you are stupid educated fool. Look at the buffoon that is your president. Look at who your president, dead man walking, is it the Bahari? Look at the Nigeria you represent. How tidy is it? No good road, no school, no light, nothing. You should be ashamed of yourself. You are one of the idiotic human being. You will go down in this with your fellow Nigeria. Nigeria will happen to you. Boko Haram and all the terrorists in Nigeria, they will live with you. They will live with you. They will be with you. Your grandma here, at your age. Look at the people that are leading you. You are not ashamed of yourself.
Let us not waste our energy on it. I thought you were saying something good.
His run is start today.
So okay, start running. All right, Amaka, baby, please uh if you want your camera on, please put it on, Amaka, baby.
Um you can put it on.
You go ahead. No, I've given you the camera on it, please, there.
Okay. Hello.
Yeah. Amaka, baby, we are not seeing you, but go ahead, I can hear you.
Are you gonna see me now?
No, no, you did on the camera.
Just on the camera.
Okay, is it on now?
Okay, yeah, it's good now, yeah.
Um hello, everyone. Uh I just want to use this opportunity to thank everybody that is um here today. I don't have much time to talk. Um I want to thank our Prime Minister, His Excellency, who is the Simon Ema. For his good work, for everything he has been doing for us, for taking our time. Um. Of his busy schedule to check on me when I was sick. But praying for me, I just want to thank him. That shows he's a good guy. Um I am back, I am strong by the grace of God and I am coming back hard at this time. I want to thank everyone that is supporting all this while I was out, sick. May the good Lord protect you, may the good Lord reward you. Uh coming to what is going on today with our sister Amaka, I just want to support. What she did, um that name Amaka sounds strong. It's a very strong name and we stand for who we are. We are not afraid to, um we are not afraid of uh who we are. We will always be Biafrans, no matter what. And uh I thank her for for standing tall to um, you know, to do what she did because it's not everybody that can do that. And that shows that um we are going home. Without taking much time, I am supporting what is going on today. With a sum of uh one thousand a gemma.
Wow.
And um I am trying to do the IOU something, but uh it's not allowing me to do it, so I don't know if anybody can. Finance Minister, please, if you have time, can you reach out to me?
Right, sure. After the.
Baby Biafrans, please, if you, if you keep money somewhere and you're waiting for your retirement or something. You can take a little bit out of it and put in what we are doing. I mean, I wish I can do more. I just resumed work today. For the past how many months I was sick, I'm just coming back to my office. And by the grace of God, we move. I am going to put fifty thousand a gemma in the IOU.
Thank you so much.
Amaka, baby, sorry, are you in Canada? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Bicono, Bicono. And Ricky Bidokwa, this uh visit, Nisi, uh with this uh sum, with this sum, sum, can we start off?
Let me tell you guys, you don't know what God, you don't know what God did for me. You know, sometimes when God give you a second chance to live, you have to appreciate him.
Yes.
Um sometimes we take things for granted, not until you. You get to a crossroad where you are between life and death and then you got brings you life, back to life. Then you know that money is nothing. Money is nothing to compare with the air that you breathe. Money is nothing to compare with when you are healthy and you're walking around and you're going about your business. Without pain, without any medication or without any um, you know, hospital visitation. It's it's been a roller coaster for two years, even though I've been on the platform doing what I I know best to do. Uh not telling anybody what I was going through, but um I was handling it myself. For the name I be Amaka, which is a strong name, you guys will not understand. So I um I am out, I am well, I am cleared. And I'm I've resumed work today by the grace of God. And I wanted to. I wanted to open the floor for coming back with what I just did because that money couldn't, couldn't have saved me. That money couldn't have brought my life back. That money couldn't have done anything, but it's only God has shown me mercy still. And I want to appreciate him for that and for a PM that has hold the ground. Strong all this while, you know, I know it's tough on his side, but he took out our time from his busy schedule to check on me and pray for me. And maybe that's what um you know kept me well. I know the 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 gods of Biafra is with him and I thank him so much for that. Um like I said. It's been a tough one, but God is good. And I'm happy to be back.
Thank you. Thank you. It shall be well with you, Amaka.
It's already well.
Finland is very close.
Yes.
And I tried to register, you know, because I I don't know, I tried to register, I tried to apply.
Am, Amaka, which one, which of the registration is it, the IOU or for Finland?
I I tried to do the um the ID card, they asked me to send my my receipt. I put my receipt together, but I'm sending it by one and they're not taking it, so.
Okay, okay. So have you been able to submit the application for ID card?
I I submitted application before I went off uh off the camera because of sickness. But um they sent me some, they didn't send me anything in the email, so I didn't get anything and um. I wasn't able to do my ID card, I wasn't able to register, so I don't know, I don't even know what to do, because.
I will call and praise to make sure we assist you to do it.
Yes, the the IT team and the BSA department will assist you to.
Because I'm I'm cleared and I think they said I can travel, so I can come to Finland by the grace of. Thank you guys, I am going to London.
I'll call you.
Much love, much love.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Minister of Finance, please follow her.
Yes, I will.
Also uh for the ID card and then of course the uh event, Finland registration so that uh. Uh you can assist her for registration and whatever difficulty she may have.
There were, there were.
Thank you, PM, thank you, PM, thank you.
Thank you, Amaka.
I want to meet you in Finland.
Okay, sir, thank you, guys, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye, boy.
Thank you.
Do you have just noticed what happened now? After this Nigeria agent, Onewa Chubia. Then blessing from Amaka Biamu overshadowed the evil.
Uh and hopefully, I cannot hear. How can they, we didn't kick him out, we want him to stay and see everything. Okay, let's go on, uh Odogu, are you unmute yourself now? Odogu now is isu, all right. Go ahead, you have one, please, that's a one minute now, please.
Are you guys hearing me?
Yes.
I hear you, please, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I really appreciate everyone of you for what you are doing. It's not easy. And at the same time, I appreciate um our Prime Minister so much. For his courage and for everything he's doing. For taking the bullet for us, it's not easy. I pray that Chukokika Biamma. The God that sees in secret. The protector of his people should continue to be with him. No matter any plan that uh the enemies are planning, we never come close to him.
Amen.
Really appreciate you for all what you are doing. In fact, I must tell you that many of us who are silent. Who because of some circumstances beyond our control, we cannot be able to speak out. Our spirit is been aligned with your own spirit, moving forward. And at the same time, the spirit of our loving brothers and sisters who have died. For the sake of this Biafra struggle. Their spirit also, I believe God is margin their spirit to that your own. To be able to continue no matter what. So as to be able to achieve your aim, which is to get house this Biafra that I've been struggling for over the years. I really appreciate, I can't thank you enough, PM, Simon Epa and Joko. The only name that the woman can never be.
Hmm.
Great man.
I never thought about this, I never thought about this before, and that is true.
Man can never be. I know you to an extent, I know your village, I know you very well, right from childhood, I know you.
Hmm.
I cannot unveil my my picture right now because of uh my family is still back at home. So I don't want to start tracing them or things like that. And um for here that I am in Canada, still, I don't want to mention some certain things, because we are on air. But um one thing I want you to know is that um I'm with you guys in spirit. Hundred percent, five, two hundred percent, if it's possible. And I'm going to support with one hundred a gemma, please.
Thank you.
Please, we need more, we need more support in the physical or both of our spirits.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For sure.
Thank you. Amen.
Thank you very much, all right. We move, thank you so much.
Viko, Achobu, Ikuofuku, Basala, our sister, uh sister Maka, the one that just uh supported us. I want to say to her that uh your healing is permanent in Jesus' name.
Amen.
And every other person. Every other person that Chukokika Biamma wants to use in future. To support the liberation of Biafra financially. Shall be alive and healthy till the very moment the spirit of God will touch him or her. Nothing will, nothing shall ever happen to you in Jesus' name. Thank you, update, 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 fifty a gemma from Ikponzo R I P to support Amaka. Okay, thank you very much, Chidebere, Chidebere iPhone, please go ahead, you have your mic now.
Oh, thank you, everybody, thank you, Your Excellency. The Prime Minister of Biafra. Mazie Samaniba. Thank you all the cabinet members. Thank you for all you're doing for the Biafran people. I want to appreciate you guys. And I also want to appreciate our gallant men who are fighting for us at the battlefield. I also want to thank our Prime Minister for not disappointing us, because a lot of us. We are also fighting on on his behalf secretly. For people that that you do not believe in him, who were trying to convince a lot and a lot of people. And he never disappointed us, thank you very much, Your Excellency, thank you so. I want to, I don't know how to do this, this is my first time coming to online, I don't know how I can. How I can um do the payment, but I would have wanted to support with fifty a gemma. Thank you once again, thank you once again, Prime Minister.
Location, please, Chidebere.
Um UK. Thank you again.
Okay, uh if you cannot access the website and use it, we will give you the UK admin. But you can do it on your own with the, through the website, W W W dot I P U B in U S A dot O. Go to the comment section, you are gonna see it now. Click on that link and you will be able to make the payment. Please uh, thanks, Sonny, please, can you help us to put it in the comment section, please? Or one uh John.
Mazirah. Mazirah, two one minute, one one minute. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate, thank you.
Don't try the comment section, you are gonna see the link, use it to make the payment, if you are finding difficult, call us, we will help you.
It's all right, it's all right, thank you very much, I appreciate, thank you.
All right, uh Juliana, please, one minute, Juliana Ogung. Juliana Ogung, you have the mic, please.
Okay, thank you so much, um um Pastor Van Van Van. I just wanna use a brief moment to thank our Prime Minister. As the only lady here in Saskatchewan, Canada, that is supporting Biafra liberation. Because we have one thousand and one Biafrans here in Saskatchewan, but nobody wants to hear. Biafra or wants to come, they they want to go to Biafra, but they don't wanna support what is happening. They don't wanna do anything, they want to stay and sit and wait until others have done it and bring Biafra for them. And they will come home and enjoy. All well and good, but I say, may Chukokika Biamma bless Mazie Simon Epa. Give him all it takes to liberate us. This person that came to put, to to say nonsense, we have already canceled it. In the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ, and it will remain the canceled. And our Prime Minister will continue to.
Let us remember that we're using only one one minute, please, just one minute, please.
Yes, yes, I'll be, I'll be done soon, so I am praying that. Uh December second is sacrosanct and we are going home. It's only me and my husband that is supporting this struggle from Saskatchewan. And we are happy to even. Uh anyway, I'm the only lady, I'm I'm happy to be the only lady and I will continue to support and pray. And as I uh we are praying, we are extending the prayer for our. Our leader Mazinamdekanu, that his spirit continues to remain stronger. Waiting for the D day, to the glory of God, where we will all march. The Father and Son, and we follow them to march into Biafra land. Well done, our PM. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And God bless you and bless all of you that are working with him in the cabinet. Remain blessed.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, please uh go ahead, uh the next one is uh Penyrim, Yocana, Edin Yocana, please, one minute, please. Unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, go ahead.
All right, good evening, everyone, um. Uh for allowing me to be here in this space and giving me a chance to talk. Uh I want to use the opportunity to thank the PM for the work I've been doing for Biafran people. You know, uh when I was a child.
Please, give, you have only one minute, don't tell us a long story of when you were a child, one minute, please.
Okay, I just wanna thank the PM. I just want to thank PM for everything he's doing and I just want to appreciate him for all the good work, we appreciate the good work and everything. And uh you know, for opening our eyes, you know, all this started with Mazinamdekanu and he has done more and more. And we are taking him for everything, because um. Here, we have been, anybody living here in Nigeria is witnessing the magnification and everything. And uh PM is bringing hope for us, so every time I see him online, I always, you know. I want to take the opportunity to thank him and every good, all the good work he's doing, and also want to tell him. Uh maybe advice that whatever he's doing, these people are very able, of course, everybody knows.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, I want to tell you one minute, you don't understand what one minute is, you just say. Uh Mazie Joshua, please, one minute. Thank you.
Uh greetings, greetings to my PM, I greet you for your special work, for all you've been doing for us, Biafrans. We know in your hand we are safe, I will not take much time. Um I'm supporting your visit to Canada with fifty a gemma, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please uh Maz, I hope the rooms are locked, please, this person in my head now, all right, let's see, Frida. Unmute yourself, Frida. Unmute yourself, Frida.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah, hello, yeah, I can hear you.
Can you hear me? Yes.
We can hear you.
Knock, 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 I didn't hear our voice, knock, knock, knock.
Let me see that deck, oh yeah, fuck me, I'm the asshole, I see.
All right. Thank you, media team, thank you, Mazie Sonny.
What's the next item on the program, please?
But I, I think that's all, we're rounding up now.
Okay, so we are rounding up, and Maz, on ever, Maz Charles. We are on the. Closing remark, item twelve.
Yes, I'm on here, I'm on here, so at this point. Ladies and gentlemen, we thank God for everything and the whole thing is logically coming to a close. With the closing remark, without wasting time, will be conducted by our Honorable Minister for Finance. Please give us a closing remark. Thank you.
Thank you, Mazie Charles.
Wow, thank you, thank you, can, thank you, Canada. Uh most and foremost, thank our Chukokika Biamma, the Almighty, that make it possible for all of us to be here today. And we still remember our leader Mazinamdekanu that was kidnapped. We pray that very soon he will be released. And we will fight, we will fight, we will do everything possible. To make sure that uh he's released, just like our Prime Minister said. That the kidnapping of our leader Mazinamdekanu would be the worst mistake that is due country called Nigeria. Have done and is happening. Thanks, our Prime Minister, for his busy schedule from meeting to another meeting. Doing the bidding of the Biafra people. We all can witness uh how he been attacked. And we all can see all the bullet that is taken on behalf of us, of us. Just like what happened with one Nigerianist that was here earlier. Somebody who refused to acknowledge that Nigeria is gone. That Nigeria is a bully country. That Nigeria is a failed country. A country that the United States of America predict the break up. What else? What else? Tunubu running around. Toy running around everywhere, trying to get a. Best uh 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 treatment for himself to still be alive. I believe he's in life support. He's a dying horse. I came across his video two days ago. Uh when he visited UK for treatment, this man is gone, he's not a, uh he and the. Pig in the creek, they are in the same category. Please fellow Biafrans, if you have not been supporting, kindly support. What we are doing is not just being real. It's our responsibility. This fight, we fight and finish the fight. We will not fight and leave the fight for our children. We are doing the right thing, if you don't believe, I don't know when, I don't know. And uh financially is the most important thing that we. Ginger the movement. Give us more morale in what we are doing. Our website is open twenty four hours. You can go there. Make your donation, be part of this great movement, be part of the history. And for everyone that have been here today showing their faces. Letting the zoo useless terrorist country called Nigeria know that we are not scared of them, that's why actually I react the way. I react earlier, but it might upset some people, but I don't care. People like that need to be dead with her, wish I can see him one on one. I swear to God, something will happen. Because we are prepared, we are not going to be scared of anyone, don't let anyone bully you. Just like as our Prime Minister said earlier, if somebody raised something to. To uh uh to kill you, to wound you, to do whatever. Raise your own, don't relent, don't run back, where are you going? They're gonna chase you and chase you until you run out of your house, your country, your territory. If you don't fight back, fight back wherever you are, whether you are in diaspora, you are back home. Don't let anybody bully you, your freedom is not negotiable. Your freedom is not negotiable, Biafra freedom is not negotiable. Please, we already uh have a lot of time into today's town hall meeting. But just be strong and if our Prime Minister see how strong we are, that will give him the energy and the morale. And on our own path, we will do the best we can financially, we need a gemma money, ego. If this, if you know you have it, we need it, we are not ashamed to say we need money. Countries like Russia, they even need money to fight their fight. Israel need money, Ukraine need money, Biafra, we are not accepted. Please, kindly anytime when we are out here doing what we are doing to raise money. To support our freedom, do your best, ask yourself question. Is this your best? With this on behalf of the Prime Minister.